Regular meeting of the Jackson City Council. Good morning, everybody. We're going to start, ladies and gentlemen, with our invocation by Reverend Roland Bingham of Pioneer Ministries out of War Five. And then immediately following that, we will have our pledge of allegiance, and I would ask Councilman Harley to lead us in such. Reverend being a welcome, sir. If we all, let's please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings upon us. Lord, we acknowledge in your word that it says, "In all our ways acknowledge you," and you will direct our paths. And we thank you, Lord, that this body of officials are of a mindset to acknowledge you at the beginning of their meetings. Lord, your word also says that the powers that be are ordained of God. And so, Lord, we thank you for civil government and for those who are concerned about that. Lord, we thank you for this city council and all those who have committed themselves, Lord, to be servants in this city. Lord, we pray that you would give them wisdom to do their jobs, Lord. We pray that you give them unity to work together, Lord. We pray that you would give them effective government as they lead the city of Jackson. Lord, we do lift up the mayor. We pray for him, for the fire chief, Lord, and all the councilmen and all the city officials of the city of Jackson. Lord, we just pray for safety for our law enforcement officials. Lord, we pray for the citizenry, and we just pray that you would bless them, Lord. We pray for peace amongst the citizenry. Lord, we just pray that you would just be with this body as they face the challenges and handle the challenges of the day. And, Lord, we just pray that you would be with them as they face the challenges of the times. Give them wisdom, Lord, keep them safe, guide them in the business that they are prepared to take on. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any special openings or acknowledgements by anybody? Yes, Councilman Harley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is May the 7th, which means that tomorrow is May the 8th, which is the 79th anniversary of VE Day, Victory Over Europe in World War II. An extraordinary event and historical for the whole 20th century. And there's still a few veterans out there that participated in that victory that are around and live in Jackson. I want to shout out to all the veterans that fought in World War II that are still around today.
All right, yes, Councilwoman Vice President Lee.
I would like to keep Robert Pugh and his family in our prayers. He lost his son over the weekend. And also, Inez Thomas and their family, they lost their brother over the weekend.
Councilman Harley?
Yes, I'd like to pay special recognition to students from our high schools that completed the Nissan Canton Learning Pathways. And they had a presentation called a capstone presentation at the end of last month. And just briefly, Jordan Norwood from Moore, Stamil Wheeler from Callaway, Manuel Sanchez from Provin, John White from Provin, James Hardy from Rebel Academy, Raquel Williams from Lanier, Jo Allen Clintsey from Provin, Corey Chapman from Forest Hill, Jada Lee from Callaway, and Ethan Crossbear from Provin. Again, these individuals, the Nissan has a program where they take them through different segments of Nissan production, and these individuals completed it, all the different tiers, and they graduated. And as for interns, one of the challenging things I would have is getting up and being at work at 6:00 a.m. So hats off to all these individuals and the CDC participation with it, Career Development Center for participation with it. Thank you, sir.
Vice President Lee.
I'd also like to recognize all of our teachers. It is Teacher Appreciation Week.
All right, thank you. Any other acknowledgements or anything else at this time? All right, colleagues, we're going to go to public comments. We have one as for now, and then we have several others that will come up when we bring up the discussion item concerning J-Train. I have two. Okay, all right, we'll start with Willa Womack. I thought I saw her. There she is. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Willa Womack. I'm with the Battlefield Neighborhood Association. I would like to yield a minister, John Hope, which is the Vice President of Battlefield Neighborhood Association.
All right, Minister Yoda Decepted.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know where to start. It's hard. I've been going through a problem for over a year now. I've been constantly calling the police, asking them for help. I have a motorcycle gang that purchased a building right next door to my home. There's a fence that runs, divides my home from their building, their property.
Speak.
Say, "This is my home."
So if you could speak into the mic so the people...
Okay, so this, say, "This is my home," and where he was sitting, this is their property. That's how close the properties are. These people, they come in, they rib their bikes up, they turn the radios up, they have made this place a club. They have no respect for the law. I've called the police constantly, constantly, every other week. As a matter of fact, a sergeant came out to answer a harassment call from the man that purchased the building because he had caused me to have to leave my home. It was so bad, couldn't stay, you couldn't sleep. When you get up in the morning time, you couldn't get up at a decent time. He'd come over with his bike, he'd sit right beside the fence by my home, ribbing the bike up, 4:30, 5:00 in the morning. He knew he was waking us up. By the time the police get there, he gone. Or either he doesn't carry the bike in the building, or he shut it off. And it's to the point, it's just hard. I need you all's help. I'm not asking for something that you wouldn't want. If someone was coming and taking your peace in your home, you would want help. And that's what I want. I want some help. I don't want to hear, "Call us back if they come back again," because they can tell you to come back. So I'm calling back, but the same thing is happening over and over and over again. Why can't, I'm a person, I'm a human being. I don't bother anybody. All I want is some peace in my home. These people have threatened me, told me, "If you have a problem with the sound of our bikes, our music, or what we're doing, call us, don't call the police." But what did I do? I called the police department because I respect law. I try to abide by the law in everything I do. It's a quiet six-zone sign, I'm sorry, it's a quiet six-zone sign that's been put right in front of the mailbox in my home. Mr. Andy Boone put it up because the doctors sent him a letter telling him that Clara lady in a wheelchair, that she's sickly, that she, that needed to put the six-zone sign up to help. They put it up, they don't abide by the six-zone sign. They don't care about the law, they don't care about me, they don't care about anybody but having a club and doing what they want to do. And I'm sorry that I'm crying. I'm a man, but I'm hurt, and I'm just tired. I'm tired of going through this same thing over a year, and the police tell me, "Call us back." How would you feel if this happened to you, and the only thing you ever hear is, "Call us back, call us back"? And this past Sunday, when I called and asked for help for this man sitting there with his truck right against the fence, this is my, this is my kitchen, that chair is the fence that divide us, he's sitting there in a truck loud, he hasn't just started this, he did this before because he's too good at it. He's sitting there ribbing the truck up, knowing that we can hear it in our home. When the sergeant come out, he come out, "What's wrong with you two?" You know what's wrong. You've been here before, and you're acting like we're supposed to be friends. This man hates me. He told me, he told me, he said, "You're the only person," they said, "Well, we were having problems with when we purchased this building." He wants a club. I want my home, I want my peace. And the sergeant turned around and told me, "Well, you know, people can go to jail for abusing 911 call." How is it I'm, I can go to jail? Why was I told that?
You have the name, you have the name of the sergeant that said that to you?
No, sir, I don't have his name, but he was, he was the only one that came Sunday. He said, "When you abuse 911, you can go to jail." And this man standing there, listening to it, smiling, he was only letting him know what you doing is all right. He can't keep calling us, and that hurt. That hurt because I called him for help. I didn't call him to make it seem I'm the criminal. I'm not doing anything bothering anybody. All I want to do is live in peace. That's all I'm asking. And as I said, I'm crying because I'm hurt and I'm tired. I'm tired of these people running over me. I'm tired of having to wake up at 12:00 and 1:00 in the morning. I can't sleep 8:00, 9:00 at night there, there. They're always there, and in the daytime, they come, they there. They don't give us any breaks. They don't, and I had to come and ask you all because nobody else is helping us. We left home and stayed because we had to get away. They wasn't letting us rest, and we didn't have enough money to stay, so we came back. We tried to sell our home to get away from this. Well, we worked for all our life, it might not be much, but we worked and we paid for
it. Yes, sir. Chief?
And we need you all to help us.
Yes, sir.
We wouldn't be here if we didn't need help.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Chief, if you would, and thank you, Mr. Hope, for, you know, coming. Chief, if you would. Yeah, Joseph Wade, Chief of Police, I did speak to Mr. Holton before this meeting started. I gave him my cell phone number, also have his number, and I will be setting up a meeting for him to meet with me in my office. I did speak to my team about this situation. They have made an arrest out there, but of course, it has not resolved his issue. So we'll look at a holistic approach. This may be a nuisance location, and we can address it that way, but I will address his issue. All right? Councilman Harley?
Yes, Chief. Chief.
Right after Councilman Harley.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief, if you would, get zoning out there. If they have turned this into a club and it's not zoned, then they're in violation of a lot of other city ordinances.
Absolutely.
And, you know, to destroy someone's peace is just egregious. It's, and I understand, I'm sure you're going to deal with that sergeant or...
Absolutely, I already found, I found his name out as we were standing here.
But, you know, that's the insult to injury. But please get zoning involved, because it's nothing more egregious than having to put up something with something in your own, a piece of your own home, and it's over and over and over, and we can't afford to lose more folks in Jackson. We got to learn to live together.
Absolutely, and he shouldn't be up here crying. I feel his pain. He shouldn't have to leave his home. He should not have to try to sell his home because we have some lawless individuals in this city. So I will work with him and stand with him as we address this issue. And he now has my cell phone number. He can contact me directly with these issues. All right, Councilwoman Lindsay?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Mr. Hope, I am deeply grieved by this situation, as you know, because our office has been working with you for many weeks on this, and this situation has already gone through environmental court. Ms. Angsworth has been working with us closely on this, and that's how the arrest occurred, not this past weekend, but the weekend before. But as the chief says, an arrest through environmental court certainly does not solve the problems. Mr. Hope has been in such a terrible situation that he has had to leave his home. I mean, he and his wife, who is ill, has had to live with family members. And we've had, as you know, Chief, we have had other people in the police department working with our office on this, but it is beyond time, I think, to really step up enforcement on this situation. Again, you know, he was arrested because he was in contempt of environmental court, but that certainly does not solve Mr. Hope's problem. Thank you. And Chief, thank you for getting his name and phone number and for pledging to help with this situation.
I will, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, thank you all so much. All right, let's proceed to consent agenda.
You should have one more public comment. Patty Patterson.
Oh, yes, thank you. Patty Patterson. I see it, last out here. Sorry about that.
Good morning. Good morning, Council, Council President, and good morning to everyone out there. I am Patty Patterson, resident of Jackson, and my concern today is the new parking meters. In the county, we've been getting phone calls over there about the new meters. We have no answers. We want to know about when are they going to be operable, what is the educational process for citizens and those who come into downtown to take care of business, legal business or whatever, we have council meetings. And will the citizens have enough time to understand this process and not just be ticketed when they don't understand the process? Because once we see the meters, we see them like every quarter of a block. But if someone parks 10 blocks away, 10 spaces away and don't see this box, they don't know that the meter is there. So we want to know what is the process for education and getting us ready for these new meters? And we understand the city need the money, and this is the 21st century, and we have to, you know, embrace change. But we don't want to embrace change on the backs of taxpayers who are just trying to make it as it is and don't want to be cut off guard with tickets and warrants for their arrests when these tickets are not paid. So that's my concern. I appreciate you all, appreciate all that you do for the city of Jackson. Thank you.
Dr. Omar?
Okay, there will be a community, there is a community education component to the new parking meters, and they went live on May 1st. So I don't see anyone here from the planning department.
Dr. O, I'm on a, I'm on a live.
Okay, Ja, do you want to give any further explanation?
Well, yes, ma'am. So to your point, there is a community meeting planned, scheduled. I need to get that exact date. They did go live on May 1st. There is a grace period. We do understand it'll take some time for the community to make adjustment to this new practice. But if she could leave her contact information with someone, I like to talk to her personally and so I can get that scheduled date. But we will be promoting a community meeting around the parking meters at a later date.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Patterson, were you here on behalf of the Heinz County? Were you here on behalf of Heinz County? Just you individually, but you are working in Heinz County? All right, just one thing I want you to just kind of take back, since we're talking about parking, it just came in my mind. The restaurant across the street on State Street, they often park in our shared parking space, and on Monday mornings, it is deplorable with the amount of trash, litter, broken glass, all that kind of stuff. So we can, I know that we share it, but if we can figure out what we can do to prevent them from messing that lot up, because a lot of our employees came in, actually yesterday, and was complaining about the glass and everything that's thrown out there over the weekend. So if you could address that, all right? All right, thank you. All right, let's go to consent agenda.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
This is removing property second on consent agenda. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor of consent agenda? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that is a vote of 6-0. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum of 6, 400 of you, and 2 joining us virtually. All right, now, let's go to claims.
Auto approving claims appearing at pages 0282, inclusive thereon, on municipal docket in the amount of $3,268,034.42, for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, you could give the motion to Vice President Lee in a second, to Councilwoman Lindsay. Mr. Malinbecker, if you would go over the high claim, I mean, the large items.
Good morning, Vidalis Malinbecker, CFO. The following represents the four largest claims on this docket. There are as follows. First, Jackson Redevelopment Authority in the amount of $498,087.50 paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for the 2011A bond principal and interest. Second is Dickerson and Boeing Incorporated in the amount of $495,579.79 paid out of Fund 173, 1% infrastructure tax. This is for the street resurfacing project Phase 1A. Third is Entergy in the amount of $342,282.60 paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for the street lighting. And the fourth is Dickerson and Boeing Incorporated in the amount of $282,025.24 paid out of Fund 173, 1% infrastructure tax. This is for street resurfacing project Phase 1A. And that concludes the four largest claims.
All right, Mr. Malinbecker, just for the record, the transportation fund that is in the funds, is that J-Train?
187, right.
Okay, 187 is J-Train.
187 is, yeah.
All right, since we have that here on agenda, and there is some desire for public comments to address that, we do have a discussion item, colleagues, for J-Train that was placed on by Kessel, woman lead, Vice President Lee. So what I'm going to do simultaneously, I'm going to have that discussion while we have this item on the floor. And so I'll, do you want to kick this off? All right, Vice President Lee?
Well, thank you. If you'll just, hold on just a moment, Mr. Malinbecker. I do want to address what happened over the weekend with J-Train before we make the payment for MV Transportation. It's to my understanding that J-Train did not run on Saturday and on Monday. I do have two people to speak that were affected personally because they did not run. And then I do want MV Transportation an opportunity to have a discussion with us so that we can find out what happened and if they remedied the situation. Mr. Crawford, would you like to come first?
Yes, sir. I have two colleagues with me, Mr. Will Devine and Ms. Sheila O'Flaherty. I'll just, I'll begin. You know, it shouldn't qualify one as a hero or heroine just to show up and do one's job. But on Saturday, April 27th, and Monday, April 29th, a select few managers, staff, and employees of J-Train earned that title. Heroine, hero. Why? Because on those two days, the vast majority of the bus operators, support staff, and dispatchers called in sick, leaving all the vulnerable riders who depend upon J-Train stranded. Many people, including myself, waited hours on the side of the road, wondering what was going on. My sources tell me it was a coordinated effort planned in advance, a sick-out, if you will. But astonishingly, we still don't have an answer to the most obvious of questions. Why? To this day, we don't have any stated grievance or explanation from the workers who called in sick. J-Train is a valuable city service that promotes commerce and keeps our economy going by getting low-wage workers to their jobs. When transit workers willfully choose not to show up, it harms the already vulnerable. Older adults, people with disabilities, those depended upon dialysis for their very lives, essential workers who keep our hospitals functioning and care for our sick. So one would think there'd be a good reason to hold all these people hostage, right? I mean, I would think so. So far, we have silence. I'm an activist at heart, and I'm very familiar with organized actions. This one makes no sense at all. It only harmed hundreds of vulnerable people who couldn't get to their jobs, medical appointments, or other important obligations. It's left the ridership scared. I'm scared. Riders are now wondering, you know, will I be able to get to my life-sustaining treatment? Will I be able to get to my job, my doctor, the grocery store, my classes? To the people that participated in this sick-out, I say this. You owe us all an explanation, and make it a good one. And to those who showed up and did their duty, the ridership of J-Train salutes you. We salute you all. Thank you.
Will? All right, hold on, Mayor, and Councilwoman Lee, we have, I think, two more, and they were registered to do public comments. Okay, all right, go ahead. You were trying to say something?
I was just going to say Sheila, did you want to go?
This is...
Good morning. My name is Will Devine. On that Saturday that Scott was speaking of, I had several locations that I needed to go to get groceries and other medical needs. I just happened to be on the bus with Scott when we were advised that this is about to be the last round, and it was like 1:30. I'm like, I'm just getting started. I got other things I need to do. I needed to go to Walmart. I got on the bus to go to Walmart, and I said, "I overheard that, you know, things are going to be shutting down early. Why?" The driver just looked at me like I was crazy. And I felt very disrespected at that time. I feel like if I asked a grown man a question, coming from a grown man, give me an answer. I'm not a child. You ignore a child. You don't ignore another adult, especially one that's older than you. Where's the level of respect for passengers? You got too many drivers that don't care, and the attitudes show it. Now, when I asked about the Walmart thing, there was someone on the bus that said, "Hey, come here a minute, I want to tell you something." I said, "Huh? Don't go to Walmart." I said, "Why? What's the problem?" "Well, I sat at Walmart for three hours waiting for a bus." I said, "What?" He said, "That was earlier during the day." I said, "Three hours?" He said, "Yes, it was three hours before any bus showed up." Now, to those that don't ride the bus, let me show you how serious that statement was. There are four different buses that come to Walmart every hour. So you waiting for three hours, and out of those four buses, none of them run there? That's a problem. The problem gets even worse. I was able to go to Piggly Wiggly on North State to get myself a lunch plate. So I go back out, I get on the bus to head home. Later that afternoon, one of my neighbors called and said, "Hey, you need to go to Walmart?" I said, "Yes, I do." So we go to Walmart in Madison. On our way back, 5:30 PM, on our way back... five-thirty PM, on our way back, we happened to go by several bus stops and there were still people stranded there. You could see the grocery bags in front of them where they had been shopping and stuck. Then it's bad because if you're riding the bus and something's going on, you don't know. You're just sitting there waiting for your expected ride. For me, it is a major problem because I'm disabled. I don't drive anymore because of health reasons and I totally depend on J-Train for my transportation. Without it, I'd be a major problem because I couldn't get anywhere. I depend on J-Train for my doctor's appointments.
Yes, sir.
For any medical or household needs that I have to take care of, I have to have them.
Yes, sir.
It's not an option for me to say, well, I'll just stay at home. I won't ride. I don't have that choice. Whether it's good, whether it's bad, I have to deal with it.
Yeah.
And for what happened Saturday, that was totally uncalled for. If those drivers have issues with their contracts or with their company, take it out on them. Don't take it out on us.
Yeah.
And remember, as a driver, you have a job because of people like me. And that's what you're there to do, to serve us. If you don't want to do that, get another job. If you're dissatisfied with what's going on, no one made them take the job.
Right.
They took it because that's what they chose to do. And if you choose to do it as a man and as a woman, step forward, just do your job.
Thank you, Mr. Devine.
I want to make one last statement then.
Go ahead.
I'm done.
Yes, sir.
The reason I can say do your job because I understand what it means to do a job.
That's right.
I'm an ex-police officer. That's a job. That is a rough job that a lot of people don't understand. Every day that you put that uniform on, you don't know that you're coming home. They don't have to deal with that as a driver. I'm done.
All right, if you would hand the mic over to Ms. Sheila.
Sheila O'Flaherty, resident of Ward Five. I also ride J-Train and on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, I didn't actually know that this was going on. This, whatever it was, this lack of operators because we just all found out accidentally. We riders didn't know our bus wasn't going to come until we stood there for hours, the way Mr. Devine just explained, or until we got to Union Station and we didn't have a bus to transfer to. As soon as I figured out what was going on, I did text and email my councilperson. But at four-thirty that afternoon, I ran into another councilperson and that one did not know that this had happened. Last week, I ran into Councilwoman Lee and she had not been informed that this had happened. Yesterday, I ran into a third councilperson and that person did not know that this had happened. We found out just by word of mouth and then at some point around one o'clock on Saturday, there was a notice on the J-Train website saying it would be closed down at two o'clock. Two o'clock Saturday afternoon, I happened to be taking a break in front of the Alexander Library and I saw a bus going to Walmart, stop at the corner of Ellis, which is not a bus stop, so it was very curious. And all of a sudden, all of these people got off the bus. And a lot of them came over to Alexander Library because it was the closest place they could go. All of these people thought they were going to Walmart on Highway eighteen. They did not know, even when they were on the bus that said Walmart up on the header, that the bus was going to stop at Ellis Avenue because it was two o'clock and they went, the bus went to the garage. On Monday, it was similar. I called on Monday and found out my buses were running. I went out and it took me an hour and a half, practically two hours to get a bus because they were actually running every two hours. I got down to Union Station and this passenger that I know, she, when she got to Union Station, she didn't know she wasn't going to have a bus to transfer to and she had to ask. And then she had to call her job and say, hey, I can't come today, there's no bus to my job. And then she had to wait an hour and get a bus home. So it affected a lot of people and we didn't even know a minute before it happened. That was it.
Vice President Lee.
Thank you all for having the courage to speak up. And I want to thank Christine Welch and her staff for stepping in when the drivers did not show up and making sure that our para-transit individuals had an opportunity to still go get their medical treatment. So thank you, Christine. I do want to open the floor to MV Transportation and I hope that we've gotten this resolved.
Granted. Good morning, President Banks, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Terry Thompson. I'm the Vice President of Customer Success for MV Transportation. So I just sat in a meeting yesterday and I was at the location and just becoming abreast of everything. I just wanted to read a statement. MV is deeply disheartened by the recent actions of several union employees that participated in the mass call-outs that adversely impacted the para-transit and fixed route service. As of this morning, the company still doesn't know exactly why the employees chose to violate the collective bargaining agreement and participate in an unsanctioned labor action. However, in a recent meeting with the local union, they raised issues with MV's safety adherence. There was no mention of MV not honoring the collective bargaining agreement or the financial terms contained within it. Please note that the previous contractor's collective bargaining agreement with the union allowed for unsafe behaviors which endangered passengers, employees and the community. MV made the union aware months ago that we would implement our industry-leading safety standards and training program. It is important to understand that MV will never compromise on our commitment to deliver world-class safety and customer service to the Jackson community and our employees. Now, what we do know about the mass call-outs, there was a Zoom call held by local union members to coordinate the call-outs. The employees that engaged in this activity did not allow, did not follow the bargaining process, which their international reps also agreed to. Now, what we're doing to prevent this from happening again, first, we've taken legal action against the union to prevent this type of activity from reoccurring. Secondly, we will continue to monitor the situation, refine our operational program and our operational ready program and to keep the staff, city as well as our staff involved and up to speed on everything. We will also continue to meet with the union to foster healthy labor relationships that will allow us to provide the kind of transit service the community of Jackson deserves and one that you can be proud of. So at this time, I'll do my best to try to answer any questions that I can.
Well, I just want you to know, this is the first time in history that this has happened. We didn't have this when we went to, when we were with TransDev and we, you know, took a leap of faith with MV. And I want to make sure that you are at least meeting with the drivers to find out what the real issue is. There's some type of, they're disgruntled about something. And we, what we cannot do is have another lapse in service. We have too many people that depend on J-Train. So I'd like to see you go above what you're doing and beyond to make sure this does not happen again.
Totally, totally understand.
Councilman Hartley?
Yes. You know, to some folks out there, your statement may just seem like, you know, yakity yakity yak. We got to make it more personal. These folks are seriously affected, their livelihood, their health, everything is seriously affected by this problem. I'd like to see if it was under city control, some type of disciplinary action. You know, if there's, but I don't know how you guys are working with the union. Or, but disciplinary action is definitely needed to dissuade anyone from just dropping off your folks and leading them vulnerable around the city. Also, what's the backup plan? Is there any type of a reserve of CDL drivers that could be called in? Is there anything like that? I mean, these are my concerns. First of all, that we do everything in our power, including disciplinary action to prevent it from happening. And secondly, that when it does happen, we don't leave folks in the lurch. We have, we have a backup plan. We have a procedure that we can go to and said, okay, let's call them up. Let's pay them three times to pay. Let's get these folks off the streets and to their destinations. I mean, you've heard the accounts here this morning. It's outrageous. So really, we don't need this to happen again.
I totally understand.
All right. You have the rest of the, all right, come on, Councilman Stokks.
Thank you. Mr. President, this situation, I didn't know anything about. And normally, as councilmembers, we would hear, we would hear some things that's going on. I know it's a new company, but we've had disputes between bus drivers and people ride the bus in the company, but it's never turned to a sick-out. So I'm concerned about this company. I hope legal will look at whether or not if we need to get out this contract, how do we get out of this contract? It had never got to what I heard, get off the bus and all that kind of stuff. I mean, we've had some knock-down, drag-out fights on bus service. It's got to be something going on because these bus drivers, in most cases, they've been driving this bus twenty, thirty years and longer in most cases. So I know that I've heard that they're telling the bus drivers not to stop if people are not at the location and some of the bus drivers have a problem with that. I think the win-win is for y'all to talk. You saying y'all getting ready to get legal action against the union? I'm for one councilperson. I've always supported the union. Now, I'm not saying that I won't be open-minded, but I don't think you need to be suing the union because most people going to have some kind of love for the union. Most people love bus service because of Rosa Parks and what she stood for. So my suggestion would be, these riders got to come first. And we got to make sure that y'all talk to them and not at them because someone should have known that a sick-out was going to take place. And normally, they trust some councilmembers to let the councilmembers know what's getting ready to happen. But for not one councilmember not to have a clue that this was getting ready to happen, it seemed like the bus company don't trust us any longer. So we need to start talking more to them also. This has never happened in Jackson, Mississippi, since I've been a councilman. I've been here since nineteen eighty-nine. And I'm saying, your suggestion about getting lawyers involved, I don't think that's the right step to make because I'm going to tell you, these unions are stronger in these neighborhoods than you think they are. You need to talk about what's the problem and how do we solve this problem? And I think somebody would tell you.
So.
Yeah, and Councilmember Lee said communicate with the council. I agree. I've never seen the council sow out the loop on one issue. At least one would have called somebody else and said, well, this is getting ready to happen. We didn't have a clue.
If you, if you respond briefly and then Mayor, Mr. Devine, the reason I can't, because we already did the public comment part, our discussion part. And so, you know, just. Okay. Okay. All right, sir.
Yeah, so I'm Councilman Stokks. I just wanted to state, so the legal action is simply to make sure that the union upholds their part of the contract because we do have a collective bargaining agreement and they just can't arbitrarily have a job stoppage or work stoppage or slowdown because they're not happy, you know, with something that we're discussing. You know, we're really trying to provide the best service that we can and that's really what it entails.
Well, what I was saying to you, and I know you have legal grounds. I don't want to question your legal grounds. But your legal grounds put people on the streets. So move away from the legal grounds and become a human being and talk to people one-on-one because these riders trying to, they're not playing. They don't have no other way. They don't have the money for Uber and all this kind of stuff. Their sole means of transportation is this bus service. Without this bus service, some of them don't eat, some of them don't get to work. So even though you have legal grounds, it's a good fight. But when elephants fight, the grass die. And these people are dying. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you. First, let me begin to the residents. Let me address you. Not only do I thank you for your comments, bringing light to this issue and making certain that there is priority in what we're talking about. I want to assure you that the city of Jackson is fully invested in our public transit system. We know that in recent years, we've made huge strides, not only in terms of all of the investments and we're going to continue to do that and this is another hurdle that we'll get beyond. Let me say to you, sir, first, I think it's premature because one thing that we know is that we don't have answers, right? It's premature to charge the company as the violator in this circumstance. Not to say that there may not be problems, right? But I do want to critique an obvious entity that is, that has at least erred in some way and that is the union. Because I have never, in all of my days, all of my organizing, being raised by organizers, seen a demonstration where nobody knows what you were demonstrating. That makes no sense. And so who, and to the union, I'm not saying that you don't have a legitimate gripe. I am saying that whoever your leadership is, if you walk away with a demonstration and nobody knows what you were fighting for, then that's absolutely silly, right? I've been told in organizing circles, if you can only organize those that think like you, you're only, you're not that much of an organizer. So part of what your effort has to be is to ensure that your voices are heard and people understand what your issues are. And so in that matter, or to that extent, you have failed. You have failed and you have undermined whatever your issue was because now public sentiment isn't on your side. Public sentiment is, is that you left people stranded. Public sentiment is, is that this wasn't well thought out, right? And so, you know, I'm not a part of the collective bargaining process. This is, this is not, these are not city employees. But what I would say is that you need to look internally to the union, at your own leadership, and determine whether they are leading you properly because that is a problem for not only the council, not to know, but the administration. We're the ones that hire, you know, the people that work directly with the management company. And so I think that that's where our focus needs to be now, is in search of answers and understanding. And I think that there may be a day that we come and we discuss where we see gaps and failures with your company, possibly. But the first thing we need to start with before we start pulling out swords is understanding the actors, why they acted so that we can go from there. But I do want to have a meeting soon and we'll make, we'll make efforts to meet with the union as well, just to understand what this was all about. But you can't state your purpose after your demonstration, you know. First and foremost, maybe your issue would have been resolved had you stated what your issue was to begin with. To the residents, I want. To the residents, I want you to know that, that my lack of, of communication on this before yesterday wasn't a, uh, a reflection of, of how important it was. I, I was out for personal reasons. I, I think I've said a million times now. I had surgery last, last week, right? Uh, and so this is very important to me. We'll get to the bottom of this. And to the union, based on the way in which you executed this. I have nothing to say about your, your reasons, because I don't know, but based on the way you executed this, shame on you. Thank you.
All right, Mr., Mr., Mr. Divine, did you have something that you wanted to briefly say? I'll, I'll allow it. Okay, I, I'll allow. No, they can't hear you on.
The thing I wanted to say was, years ago, with the bus system, we didn't have the problem with the drivers that we do now, and there was a reason for it. It was mandatory for all the drivers to have their nameplate up in the bus, to where we knew who was driving us. If they knew that they could be easily identified, we had less problems with the drivers.
All right.
Now, we don't know who our drivers are. And if they say anything, we don't have the camera systems that they have on the buses. We don't have any fallback on that. But if that identification is up there,
Right.
those attitudes change. They become more drivers than letting their personalities take over. And we didn't have to deal with that then. So I think it would be good to have those name tags.
Put back up.
Mandatory, back in that bus, and every driver has to have it when they work. If they don't, that is a violation, and they should be fined for it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Divine.
Thank y'all. Thank you for your time.
Wanted to do this because we have this on claims, but we also have two other, you know, uh, let, let me just say this, uh, just as summary. And, uh, Vice President Lee, I, I'll lean to, um, you if there's any action you want to take or anything you want to do. I, I do agree that the union at some point should have let Ms. Welch and the administration know. I think what we can't speak to is if the union communicated directly, uh, to the management company. And how long they have been communicating to the, uh, to the management company. So I, I can't be quick to say, you know, um, where this is. But I, I do think, um, that it's something that needs to be addressed and getting to the bottom of quickly. Um, you know, I, you know, companies, we're unions. Police fire, they do blue, blue flows, blue strikes. And one of the reasons why they do it is a ploy to get the attention of whomever that management company is. And, and I find it hard to see how you would file a suit against the union, when at the end of the day, they're gonna say, well, we all individually just called in, and there, there's no minutes in the union reflecting that that was an organized event. Just, just wanted to kind of clear it up. So I think that that was an attention getter and maybe they got your attention. I think you all need to sit down, as the Bible says, come let us reason together. You know, um, and I don't know how much of that been done. Uh, Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, you said enough. You is well said. Well said. I'm ready to vote against claims.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
It just, you know, when it does settles, we cannot leave our people stranded. Understood? Period. Okay? Never. Okay, thank you.
All right, Council, Councilman, Vice President Lee. All right, all right. So, uh, that's claims on for, uh, any, any other comments, questions? All right.
Mr. Banks, Mr. Banks.
Yes, yes, yes.
If, thank you. Hello, um, if there's any unreadiness about claims because of this one item, should we consider just removing this one item from claims?
That, that is my thinking, especially if there's unreadiness. I don't want to see it fail. Yes, sir.
So.
Hold on, hold, hold, hold on. We have a motion on the floor. Is, is there a second to remove it?
Second.
But you may create another problem, right?
Okay.
The problem that may, I don't know, if, if you don't pay the company, right? Then how they gonna pay the workers?
Well, they, they, they need to go have a meeting with the union as soon as possible and get back with us, so we call a special meeting. Period. All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor to remove, um, this item.
Question, Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Um, so if we don't pay this company, then the workers don't get paid. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Well.
Come state on the record.
Well, let, let me say this. Uh, I, I think that I, I don't know this company to be in the business of benevolent work, right?
Right, I get it. But just have somebody come say on the record before this body that you are absolutely sure that all of this is payroll, or a portion of it is payroll.
I'm sorry. Christine Welch Transit Services. The invoices we are paying is for January and February expenses. They've already paid the employees during the month of January and February. We are working out the terms of our contract. So these are past invoices that they do need to be paid for.
Yes, Councilwoman Lee.
Colleagues, if we could withdraw the motion and the second, and then we will look at claims next month to see if they have, uh, resolved anything. And then see what type of discounts we get for Saturday and Monday.
I withdraw.
I withdraw my second.
The motion and the second have been withdrawn. Now we have, uh, claims on the item is, uh, is, I mean, claims on, it, as, as stated. Uh, all in favor of claims?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, item carries five, two. Item carries five, two. Okay, all right, payroll.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction, claims numbered three zero two one zero, one zero two, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
It's moved property. It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions, comments? All of, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously seven zero, item six, item sixteen.
Order authorizing the mayor to reappoint Brian Washington to the Jackson Redevelopment Authority, J R A Board.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we're withdrawing that item right now. Uh, we'll, we'll bring it back.
I withdraw my, um, motion.
Thank you.
I would, I reluctantly.
I, I hadn't had any convers, I hadn't had the opportunity to have any conversation about that.
Let me ask this, um, would this prevent them from having a quorum?
He's here.
He's here?
Yeah, I just hadn't had a conversation. Uh, we hadn't talked about it. So I, I just, I didn't know that that was on and those things. Let, let's talk in a second, and, and I'm sorry about that. Forgive me for that.
Do you want me to hold it, bring it back toward the end of this meeting?
Uh, no, because I need the opportunity, uh, to have, so put it, you don't have to, just take it off this agenda and I'll bring it back. I'm gonna have a conversation with you right now.
Mr. President, before I.
Hold on, before, yeah, before we remove, go ahead. I want to allow some conversation on it.
Yeah, uh, I was gonna say, before I withdraw my second, I'd like to, uh, just, uh, uh, point out, Mr. Washington has been a stellar, uh.
Hold on, hold on, Mr., Mr. Wash, Mr. Washington, hold on, the council still, we still actually have it on the floor. The council's addressing, um.
Yeah, I would just say, and before I withdraw my, uh, second, I wanted to just point out that Ward Five, uh, we're completely satisfied with representation and we, you know, exhort, uh, uh, and, uh, and commend all the activities of Mr. Washington and, uh, and his performance as our representative.
All right, yeah, I, I, I want to, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Banks. Um, I, I wanted to echo the sentiments of, uh, Councilman Hartley. Uh, you know, I've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Washington over the past couple of years. And all the other J R A appointees have, have nothing but high praise for him. And I think he is a very valuable member of the J R A Board. I'm just sorry that the mayor has been, um, under the weather and unable to meet with him before this meeting because he's taken time out from his busy day and, um, but I, but I understand the mayor had surgery. But, uh, I did, while we had this opportunity, just wanna, I just want to thank you, Mr. Washington, for all the work that you've done with J R A.
Yeah, yeah, I, I want to echo that as well. Mr. Washington, you have, first of all, you've been doing this work in the community way before you was even on J R A. You've been doing, you know, a lot of rehab and your community work and your love for this community is tremendous, and I appreciate that. But I also want to echo the sentiments, because everybody on the board, even the new E D speaks very highly of you and your work. And I pray that you're able to continue to do that, uh, um, cause your contribution, being someone that's a homeboy is very valuable.
Yeah, if I could just say briefly, I, I ask that nobody read anything substantial into this, other than the fact that, that we have a process and, and I just hadn't been able to fulfill that process.
I don't think nobody, I think the fact is, because he's here, and he took out of his time.
And I didn't know you were even gonna be here. That's my, that's, all of this, all of this is Shokey's fault. So y'all can, y'all do it anyway, so y'all can blame me on this one, right?
Mr. Mayor, I, I hope that you would take the considerations of the council's comments into your, uh, into your, uh, your deliberations.
All right, any, any, any other questions, comments? All right, all right, so I'll officially take, who, who, who was the, who's? All right, Drew, who's the second?
And I withdraw my second.
All right, the second and motion have been withdrawn. Uh, we'll hold this. All right. Matter of fact, since it's been put on the agenda, let's put it in economic development, so that it could just be placed back on by the council. All right, item seventeen.
Order authorizing the mayor of the city of Jackson to apply for the F Y twenty twenty-two Project Safe Neighborhood, the Department of Public Safety, Division of Public Safety Planning. Also authorizing the submission and the acceptance of the F Y twenty twenty-two Department of Public Safety, Division of Public Safety, Safety Planning for one hundred sixty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second. It's moving property second on this item. Say it again. It's moved property second on this item. Any questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Councilman.
Council, Councilman Griselle and Lindsay.
Aye. Aye.
Wait, no, Griselle. Is he still there? All right, all right, let the record reflect that we have a quorum of six, and, uh, the vote is six, uh, oh. All right, uh, next item.
Order proving the payment of the sum of three thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-six cent to Jenkins Automotive for goods and services obtained by the municipal garage for the benefit of a twenty twenty-three Dodge Durango vehicle used by the Jackson Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved property second on this item. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six zero, next item.
Order ratifying the emergency procurement of dead carcass removal services from Waste Pro, authorizing payment for service rendered to A R M Solution, Inc., Waste Pro's collection agent, in the amount of one thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moving property second on this item, with the understanding that it won't be going to the processing center. Uh, any, yes, sir.
Yeah, just as discussed in yesterday's planning meeting, uh, this is for the dumpster disposal. The process is, uh, when, when animals, uh, come there and there and, and, and they are dead, already picking up, pick them up from the side of the road dead, then, uh, uh, then they go to a freezer and then it, to a dumpster. And the program, it looks as though the program is back in its full effect. And with the disposal of this waste, it should add, uh, a little bit extra space, um, for collections uh, at the, uh, Animal Control Center.
All right, yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. What kind of timeframe are we looking at? Uh, my concern in some neighborhoods, and I'm saying all, buses are now eating.
They get them.
What's out there. And if we don't remove the animals timely, there's gonna be more and more buses, and that's kind of off of sight for mama driving the children with her to the grocery store, and they seeing these big old birds eating the dead dog and taking off and all of that.
George Jimmerson, Captain, Jackson Police Department. What we have is, we, we answer the call when they called in. And, uh, we come and try to retrieve the dead carcasses in a timely fashion, but we have to get the call uh, to know where the carcasses a- actually are. So when we get the call, we do respond, try to be in a timely fashion to get them off the street or corridor.
Do you suggest we dial six oh one nine six oh one two three four?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Dial that number and then let that procedure start from there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Dispatch give us the call and then we'll respond to it.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, I think last meeting we discussed this, you had given out your personal, uh, A, A cell number.
Yes, 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 yes. Yes, you can call me at seven six nine two zero nine seven three four zero. You can call me directly, sir.
Can you repeat it once more?
Seven six nine two zero nine seven three four zero.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries six zero, next item.
Order ratifying the acceptance of accident reconstruction training from the Department of Public Safety for the City of Jackson Police Department, and authorizing payment for said services.
So moved.
Second. It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries six zero, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Mississippi Department of Public Safety's Office of Highway Safety for a grant in the amount of two hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and accept award funds for occupant protection, D U I, and dispatcher services.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions, comments?
Questions.
All right, Councilman Stokes, then Councilman for it.
Uh, Chief, with the recent, um, jury finding, citizen guilty of D U I, are we experiencing, have we seen more? Well, let me rephrase it. We used to have a D U I team. Do we currently have that now operating in the city of Jackson?
Yes, Assistant Chief Vincent Griselle, yes, we do have D U I units.
Okay, now, we seen a number of people that's, uh, under influence. Some drinking, some other issue. My question is this. What?
Joseph Wade, Chief of Police.
My question is this. What are we doing to make sure that people in these, uh, I would think about the poor neighborhoods, but I know it's gotta be city wise, that they have some kind of, of protection against habitual, uh, people D U I like, like this lady.
Yes.
The lady, I think one child was killed and two others hurt real bad, but they said she'd been back, back then.
Yeah, absolutely. My heart and prayers go out to that family, my condolences as well. We have a very good D U I team. We have three officers assigned specifically to detection and D U I enforcement. We have a partnership with Mississippi Officer Highway Safety. Currently this year, so far, we're right at eighty D U I arrests for the year. That is being very aggressive. And traditionally, each one of our D U I officers make over one hundred D U I arrests a year. They're part of the D U I one hundred club. So we're taking a very strategic approach to dealing with that. It's a great partnership with this grant opportunity to make sure that we have the resources and the equipment, the intoxicated equipment, to properly enforce D U I enforcement here in the city of Jackson. But I do agree with what you're stating. We not only focus on I twenty, I two twenty, and I fifty-five, we're on Cooper Road, McDowell Road, Raymond Road, Highway eighty, North Side Drive, because we know a lot of these individuals do, not only travel on the highway, but they travel on city streets and roadways as well.
Yeah, Marlo to King, which will.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank. All right, thank you.
Councilman for it.
Chief, the my my question is, um I appreciate all the success you've had in in building up the sworn officers on on the staff over the past six months, whatever how long it's been. The um are we gonna pursue the COPS grant for for additional funding from from the federal government, from D O J, to get uh to further increase our sworn officers?
As soon as we hit that number of two seventy-five, which is my budgeted number, right now, we are graduating a class this Friday. We're swearing in two more officers, so we're between two sixty-five, two seventy, and we're close, we're very, very close. Once we hit that number, then we can pursue that grant, but that is our full intention is to move forward with that.
Okay, please do, thank you.
I guess what I'm hearing.
Councilman Hartley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh before we apply for the additional uh officers under the COPS program, you want to get a certain number.
Yeah, we have to reach our budgeted amount of two seventy-five. We do not wanna be accused of supplanting or anything like that. But we started that conversation with our grants writer, and also we've had some initial conversation with the U S, excuse me, U S Attorney's Office as we move forward, what that looks like. There's a lot of grant opportunities out there.
Yes.
A lot of them, and we have to reach out to our state partners, our federal partners as we move forward, because the person that benefits the most from this is the citizens.
Yes.
Who are standing here today crying, the people who are standing here today that are being victimized by these individuals who continue to pillage our city.
And again, how far are we from that uh reaching that number?
Less than ten.
So we need ten more under the city's program, and then we could apply for the COPS.
Absolutely.
And we are budgeted for those ten.
Two seventy-five, yes, and right now around two sixty-five, two sixty-six. I'm swearing in two more within the next couple of weeks, and as I stated, an academy class graduates this Friday.
Excellent, excellent.
How how many's in that class, chief?
It's a state class, we have three.
You have three that's coming to you?
We have three, we have three, and I'm excited about that. With the amount of individuals who want to come work for J P D, we should be able to get that number without having another police recruit class.
Okay, i- if there was a way to quantify or to show that, I think that that would be satisfiable and going on and dealing with that, I think it's a ninety day, within a ninety day period. Uh but nevertheless, we'll talk uh offline. The other thing is the memos uh as far as proposed uh before we get into budget sa- season so that we can look at it. I know we requested from the police department and fire department, but whatever that would be as far as your proposed pay structure going into the next fiscal year.
Absolutely, I'm gonna let you in on a secret. We will be asking for pay raises.
That's no secret.
That's no secret, okay.
Chief.
You know, chief, I I think while we do that and and although we're scraping the bottom to make sure that we can get more from the Department of Justice, I think that we we still are doing it injustice by not making sure that there's not enough money patrolled for you to have at least three hundred fifty officers.
Oh, absolutely, I agree.
I think that we have to push that, uh you know, as one chief once told me, visibility is your number one deterrent. He's sitting back there somewhere, but I'll let you figure out who that was.
All right, Councilman Hartley.
Yeah, just one other thing, chief, look, if someone has a cousin, nephew, or someone out there that's law abiding, is standard, and could properly do that job, what is their path to getting into your system?
Well, right now, we are seeking good, qualified, educated people who want to give back to their community. So we are recruiting at Jackson State University, Hans Community College, and even Alcorn State University.
Oh, boy.
To get the next crop of uh J P D officers. But wanna make sure we have people that are intelligent because the decisions that they make every single day are life and death situations. So wanna make sure we're just, we're getting qualified people and not someone that just wants to, you know, have that type of power in our communities.
Who who are you sending to Alcorn? I just wanna know who going down there.
Uh Deputy Chief Tyrone Butler.
Griselle down there.
Deputy Chief Tyrone Butler always volunteers to go, so.
All are welcome.
Take Melissa with you.
All are welcome, as long as we get those numbers up.
We will, absolutely.
We'll support you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, uh one one more thing, chief, and I know that I hope it's on your radar. We gotta do something about these four wheelers, man. You know, what what happened in my old neighborhood over over in the sub, you know, I mean, we just, we just gotta find a way to start.
Yes.
Dealing with this.
Absolutely, I just gave an interview with Channel sixteen earlier about drag racing, dirt bikes, four wheelers. These vehicles are not street legal, but we continue to have individuals who are lawless and reckless and continue to drive those vehicles on our city streets. But this is another layer, councilman, they don't wanna stop for law enforcement. They do not wanna stop. So I have partnered with the Sheriff's Department, uh Capitol Police, and Mississippi Highway Patrol so we can use their technology as well as we address these issues. Helicopters and drones to be specific.
And that they can, those four wheelers, they can get off the beaten path that, you know, police cars can't. Uh just one other thing, you mentioned the Capitol Police, perhaps, Mr. President, we could have a discussion item maybe in the next meeting or some something where they can brief us on the changes to the jurisdiction of the Capitol Police.
Yes, and it's going to, the footprint is going to be from North Side Drive down to Raymond Road. That's a huge footprint. And we also have to have a discussion about what the nine one one system looks like in that area as well. I think they're running into some issues with the geofencing. So the calls may still come directly to us, they have to be passed over to them, so those logistics have to be worked out.
Okay, and uh I'm not sure, Mr. President, if we need to put it in a committee where they can come and brief us or uh we can put it as a discussion item uh for the next council meeting.
All right, don't we have Public Safety Committee meet coming up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Banks, we do. It's this Thursday, it's this Thursday, and it's not too late to add an agenda item, Mr. Hartley.
Yes, I I certainly appreciate it, the nine one one and Capitol Police jurisdictional um matters, yes.
But yeah, that that's already on there, Mr. Hartley, it's already on the agenda. Not nine one one, but the I I don't think, but the other is.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Could we get legal to research the law and and brief us all? Because it's it's my understanding, some around Capitol Police uh feel that they will have citywide jurisdiction. And I think we need to make sure we all on the same page because, you know, we keep hearing, uh the chief seeing one footprint and then they have a different footprint, so it's good to have a the copy of the law that's read from the law with the law state, that way we're all on the same page.
Drew Martin, City Attorney, uh we'd be glad to do that. There's some legislation that lays out the boundaries of that, and we can have that prepared at the same meeting that uh the council's setting for this other discussion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any any other questions or comment, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously, uh next item.
Twenty-two was pulled.
Twenty-two is pulled, that's, thank you, all right.
Order ratifying the procurement of fiber repair from Metro Communications and Utility Contractors and authorizing payment to said vendor in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred and four dollars for services performed and completed on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second. It's move property second on this item, any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Mr. Reed, what's all included in the service we paying for? I know we saying fiber repair.
Yes.
Is that, what location, downtown, what?
Riverside Drive, over near the R T C C and the telecommunications building.
Where we we where we redid the the street?
Yes, over that area.
No, the street not done, over there, I uh I rode that.
I think they're trying to get all that situated before they finish the street up.
I think they said they are fini- are we finished with Riverside?
I don't know.
I'm not sure about this street.
Councilwoman Lindsay, are are they finished with Riverside?
No, uh, Miss, Mr. Banks, there's a little portion that still needs to be redone, and it is, we're waiting on Jackson Water to lay the new water line in that little bitty spot, and it's right where you uh go across the bridge at I fifty-five. But the part that was funded, uh the rest of it is completed.
Okay.
Now, I know we're in tech, with technology, we in this fiber stage. So we need this to uplift us or repair, explain to the public what we do.
So this was a fiber rip. Oh, sorry, this was a fiber repair. So the existing fiber that was there was broken, and it was repaired back in March.
How was, how did they break it, how how was it broken, what happened?
If I make no mistake, for that location, a tree limb fell on the fiber.
Fiber not underground?
No.
Some places.
Some places it is.
Okay, but this is on top of it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we understand, I understand that.
All right, yes, sir. No, are you? All right, he's yielding to you, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Oh, I just needed to clarify something on the on the rest of Riverside job. Our part is finished. Um uh Jackson Water is going to complete the road where they are laying the water line. So I just needed to be really clear about that. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman.
Yes, I'd just like to get off topic, just one moment, make this one statement, that is, I'm not sure who who controls the cable companies, but they're leaving these down wires all over the place. And somebody need to get on them and make sure that when they finish a job, they take the wire and everything associated with away. I don't know if that's your department or not.
I'll look into it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On our next to the last page, didn't put a total amount, but I see the slash where they had underground, fiber optic repair underground.
Where you looking, Mr. Councilman Stokes? Oh, it says underground slash aerial.
That's below and.
Above.
Above.
So I I think it's, it may be a mixture of both.
Is it a mixture of both that they repair?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
All right.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Here in another, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. All right, let the record reflect that we, while this item was on the floor, we do have a quorum of seven, and that vote was five, one against, and one abstention. All right, uh next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Proud City for website and hosting annual maintenance services.
So moved. Item dies for lack of second. Let me, let me, let me say, Proud City is the website, right?
It's it's the hosting.
It's the hosting?
Yes.
Y'all y'all looked at somebody else? All right, we're we're talking about it later. All right, item item fails for lack of second, uh next item.
Order authorizing the contribution of matching funds to various organizations organizations to support the development of the arts or social and community service programs and authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the entities receiving matching funds.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item, uh any questions or comments?
Uh comment, Mr. President.
Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, uh I I think this item is extremely important for the city as a whole. Wes Jackson, C D C, uh with the activity they had, I think, last week, had a chance to go uh that Friday night and Councilman Hollywood was dancing up a storm and it was good for the city as a whole.
Uh I think the 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 brightest moment of that that occasion uh with the Lynch Street uh uh was seeing uh Councilman Stokes dance. Um it just did, brought joy to my heart.
But what we tried to say is that the funding is not great. But it helps. These uh organizations try to achieve what they're trying to achieve. Again, I I I wish we had more money and maybe in a later time, a better time, we could get more. But please don't stop helping a lot of these programs, cuz they they really, really need it. I know at the, at the uh oh, I'm sorry, at the Wes Jackson C D C, uh she said that they um want them to start trying to charge. If they charge, it would help so, it would hurt so many poor people who get a chance to come and see some professional entertainers absolutely free and come into these neighborhoods and a lot of people can't afford these prices that's charged today. And it just send the right message that you still have things uh in these neighborhoods, in these communities, that's wholesome, that's good, that families can still go to and enjoy themselves. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Hartley.
Again, I'd like to echo the sentiments of Councilman Stokes, and that is that when we have these events, it brings together the village effect. We get a chance to not think about all the ills. We can celebrate our young people, our old people, we can celebrate our music, our food. It just completes our community. So please, if there's any way we can get additional funding and 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 at least not take away from the funding, uh please look for those ways because it just does so much for our communities.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
How soon would these grants be available uh to these uh business and people who are receiving them? And the reason I ask, I know with the uh Doggone Dissing Festival, they trying their hardest to buy school supplies. And what they run into, some of these bigger organizations, they go lock up most of the school supplies in terms of buying them buck. And then others come with a small amount of money, and we don't have access to get something that these children really need. So if the money's released early, then the people with small money can get ahead of the game and get some of the supplies before most of them are gone. So that's why I ask, how soon would the money be available after we vote today?
Um after the vote today, oh, I'm sorry, Pamela Scott, Director of Human and Cultural Services. Um the process is that if they pass this council on today, um we will have them assign a contract, and it will go back to legal for review. And I'm not sure exactly the timeline, but um after the contract is signed, then it will go back um on, it will go on a docket for a payment.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Just, just. President.
Yes, sir, uh Councilman Griselle.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Uh once this passes today, roughly when will these organizations receive their payment?
Um again, um after they resign their contracts, then it will go back through legal and depending how long that process takes, they'll receive their checks, it'll be uh made payable.
Do we have an idea in turn, you know who I'm asking about, as Jen? And uh you know, they want their check, and I mean, normally, they would have received it long before then. So can you give me a good guesstimation in terms of what I can tell their leadership in terms of when they can expect uh, you know, payment and to get through legal so they can go ahead and move on with other plans?
Well, we have contracts ready for them to sign, and so I would have to defer to legal and finance as far as the timeline, from the date that we get a signed contract and it goes back to legal. So I don't know how long that typically takes.
Can someone from legal or finance respond to that, please?
Sandra Monk, here Deputy City Attorney. So normally, when the contracts come in, I will review them, City Attorney reviews it, goes to the mayor's office for signature, goes to city clerk, um they make a copy, and then it goes back out to the department to be picked up. That's normally two weeks, a week and a half, it just depends on how quick it gets to us. Um the process for finance and issuing the checks, I can't answer that. So then it would go back to the department, which is Human and Cultural Services, and then they will upload that into Munis for the check to be issued. So maybe two to three weeks? So maybe two to three weeks? A month? I don't, it's all speculation.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, yes.
Oh, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Um, yesterday in work session, I asked the administration for a memo explaining why this process has been so laborious and taken so long this year. Uh, in years past, it has not been the case. Many of these organizations, um, are desperately awaiting this money. And so I still do want, uh, some sort of explanation. And I don't ask for it today in the meeting, because frankly, it seems like it's going to take a minute to put it all together. But just note in the future that these are critically important checks. And I mean a lot to our communities. And we need to be more intentional and, um, timely in how we get this, these checks to our people. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Councilman Brazil.
Thank you, I echo that. And, uh, if I could get something in writing also to share with, uh, the Association of South Jackson Neighborhoods, I would really appreciate that.
I, I'd be happy to provide that, and I would like to speak to that. Um, as a newly appointed director, I wanted to make sure I did my due diligence to make sure that the applications that were submitted were, uh, met the minimum qualifications and that we weren't just, um, awarding the same people over and over just because that was what had been, um, the norm. Um, I did, uh, approve, um, the applications that were submitted and I, um, did not do so until I felt confident in, in what I was submitting to legal for approval. So I do take full responsibility for the delay. Um, and so going forward with the knowledge that I have now, I don't foresee that, um, postponing, um, making the applications available to the public as they had been in this, this cycle here.
Mr. President?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Scott, and I really appreciate that. Uh, appreciate you owning that, that is a true sign of good leadership.
It sure is.
Okay. But I will say that these same organizations have been coming back year after year, and they will continue to come back year after year. These organizations are very important, uh, to our, our neighborhoods. Um, and they rely heavily on this support to make sure that they're able to get these programs out and to celebrate community in the city of Jackson. Thank you.
All right, uh, Dr. Scott, just real quick, just from my memory, because it's all over the place. The hundred and forty K that's set aside for this, is that coming from grant funding or is this something that's just set aside within the budget?
It's just set aside for, within the budget.
Can, can, can we look at, and, and, and I think on, from a year-to-year basis, um, even if we have to look at going in to somewhere to get it, um, look at maybe increasing this to around two fifty. Um, I, I think that this is very important. Uh, and, you know, poor dog that won't wag his own tail. And, and this is a good way for these communities to just be proud of some of the things that are going on, especially some of, you know, when you look at the National Baptist Convention, you look at some of the people that are on here. You know, I think it's important that we look at increasing that. So if, if we can look at that before we get into budget season, yes, sir?
Yes, and, and in addition, uh, there has to be other grant fundings uh, under, you know, under community or, uh, urban development. It has to be something else out there that we can look at, you know, perhaps getting free money. Uh, because this does just so much for the cohesion of the communities. Um, so if we could look into any type of grants, um, you know, from HUD and other sources.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions here in another, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order requesting approval of professional entertainment services and payment to Vincent Williams for the Healthy Mind, Healthy Body Twenty Twenty Four Wellness Fair Event being held on Saturday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty four at Grove Park Community Center.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
President, uh. Hello, men.
How you doing, sir? Abraham Muhammad, Parks and Rec.
This activity, now this is next Saturday.
Yes, sir.
What's all included with this activity?
No, it's May eighteenth.
Eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. But it's next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's all included?
Uh, we'll have, uh, health screening taking place, uh, other, uh, dieticians and nutritionists on, uh, on hand to be able to teach about healthy living and lifestyles. Um, be able to take some of the vital signs and give you a reading. Uh, some of the readings will come back later in the mail, because it takes a little longer to be able to do so.
Now, the professional entertainment would be.
Uh, the DJ providing music and festive atmosphere like we always do every year.
It's not Big Allen?
Sir?
It's not Big Allen?
Yeah, he was good, vehicle, I had no idea Vic was that good.
Well, we, uh, we got something else in mind for Mr. Allen, I'll be speaking with him later.
He is good, I'm telling you.
Yes, sir.
He didn't look like the Vic that be in here, got those entertainment uniforms and bandin'.
Well, we got something taking place June eighteenth that I'm hoping that he'll probably take in.
I'm gonna try to get there.
But for this one, Saturday afternoon, we, we styled it specifically for you.
Okay, because I can't come to the get skinny thing, it, it's too late for me.
Well, not that, but we figured that you'll be able to show them how to do the slide and whatnot on the eighteenth.
He can do it, he can do it. Because, yo, he can do it.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just going off what Councilman Harley said.
He can do it, man. He is good. Because I'm in shape, but my friend is there.
I'm just going off what Councilman Harley said, I mean, you know.
Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Mr. Brazil, do you have any questions or comments since it's in your ward?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Muhammad, do you have a graphic or anything that we can, uh, get out to the residents? We have a lot of, you know, this, this area sits on the cusp of wars three and four, and we have a lot of elderly people who would love to take advantage of this opportunity.
Yes, sir, we'll get that forwarded to your office by the close of business today.
Uh, can.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, uh, Dr. Muhammad, if you could send me a flyer and, uh, you know, make sure we mention it also on our radio show.
We'll get it disseminated amongst the council.
Among the council.
Yes, sir.
Email.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, a, a, any other current question or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously, next item.
Order requesting ratification of past professional services and approving future professional services and payments to Radiation Detection Company for radiation dosimeter badge measurement services for veterinarian staff at the Jackson Zoo.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item, any question or comments?
Uh, just one quick, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Radiology?
Yes, sir.
Dosimeter? Okay, I, I, I get it, I, I understand that completely, but what need do we have for radiation at these?
This is a device that the veterinarian use, uh, to protect themselves when they're conducting X-rays on the animals.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
The old library on the property.
Yes, sir.
Someone called, I, I don't know who, is it for rent lease? Uh, it's abandoned, I know it's been abandoned for years.
Yes, sir.
Maybe it was something else at the library, I remember from the days of the library. Uh, that's right, I don't know the last thing it was, you, you know who's building them, I'm talking about?
Yes, sir, you, you're talking about on the zoo property itself? Yes, sir. Yeah, the initial inspection that we've had done a couple of years ago is, is really not habitable for anyone to conduct any type of business in it. So I'll be moving to get with the, uh, the Department of Planning and Development about going forward in a different direction with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an operating agreement with the National Council for the Traditional Arts to produce the National Folk Festival in Jackson, Mississippi in the years twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, and twenty twenty seven.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moving property second to twice on this item. Any question or comment?
A folk.
Go ahead.
A folk festival, what's, what's included in a folk festival?
Good afternoon, I'm Geekah Hurricanum Development. So this folk festival is, um, a national event where, um, diverse communities, diverse performers are celebrated. Yes, ma'am.
So I know we were supposed to raise some money, have we, have we reached, reached that threshold?
So the city has raised a million dollars over, um, but we do still have a ways to go, so we're, we're currently still fundraising.
So is that why it's put off till twenty twenty five?
No, we'll have a soft launch, uh, in twenty twenty four.
Okay.
Uh, well, first we'll have the press conference, which all of you guys are invited to, it'll be next on the twenty first of this month. Um, and then the soft launch will be in, in the fall, and then the, the full festival will be on twenty five, twenty six, and twenty seven. So it's a three-year thing with the, uh, fourth year being, um, a Jackson Signature Event.
Well, yeah, I'm fully supportive of this, do we know where it will be held?
It's in downtown Jackson. The purpose of it is to, uh, revitalize downtown corridors.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other question?
Yes, sir. Just one quick, uh, could you delve a little bit into the folks? I know you said it's diverse, what type diversity are we, we'll be looking at? I'm, I'm looking to be attracted, maybe, do you have, uh, you know, a square dancing or, you know, what type diversity?
I may, uh, and I was told that this was going on. Um, so this festival isn't, it, it, it will be America's music, right? Uh, and all of the diversity of that, you know, what we know, uh, but we're trying to be limited in what we say right now. Oh. Because we have some, we have an agreement with the organization that selected the city of Jackson. And, uh, we don't want to, uh, go ahead of that, that announcement and, and how everything comes out. And then there's a number of cities, I think we spoke about this in work session yesterday, uh, that there have been a number of contributing agencies, private businesses, uh, cities, uh, you know, to name a few. Uh, Visit Mississippi, Visit Jackson, uh, I think Bank Plus, uh, I think Trustmark. Um, I don't want to forget a name, but Canton, uh, the city of Canton, uh, Vicksburg, Flowood, Pearl, they've all made, uh, an investment. So what I do want to say, um, that is important to note, is that Yeeka has been a real champion in this process. She deserves, uh, she deserves credit for that, her team has been working overtime. Uh, and, and I also want to say that if and when we, when we do this right, this will be something that will be lasting in the city of Jackson. We're not talking about something temporary. Uh, when we make this announcement, then we can make it more clear what we mean by lasting.
And when will we, would there be a brochure or anything put out on it or?
There'll be, there'll be a whole marketing, you know, you, you, let me say this, you won't be able to miss it.
Okay. When, when is this gonna, the advertising gonna kick off?
Uh, the twenty first of May.
Twenty first of May, good, looking forward to it, thank you.
Of course.
Yes, sir.
Is this gonna be similar to what Jubilee Jam was or?
Councilman Stokes, can we just not talk about this right now?
Well.
I, I get you, I get you.
When you hear folk, you, you talking about folk music?
We can't, so. We, we'll explain all of it, I, we won't leave any detail out. There are some requirements, I, I'll just say that this was a highly, highly competitive process.
Very.
Jackson won. There are some requirements in that process that we have to live up to. Um, and we'll explain all of that later on. I, I noted, I, I'm pretty sure that, that when I go, you, and you go in your car and you turn it on, you don't hear folk music playing. So, but, but we'll, we got you, we got you.
Beyonce sang Country, no? All right.
You can't be Beyonce, come on?
No, it's not.
I said she sang Country. No star in that. Something about a cowboy.
When you don't know, you can speculate, right?
I don't know. Ask Melissa, she'll tell you Beyonce. All right. Uh, I'm pointing at you, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the application in supplemental form with the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration to apply for the FY twenty twenty four competitive funding opportunity entitled Low or No Emission Vehicle and Bus and Bus Facility Grant Program in the amount of twenty million, five hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and related documents upon the award of the grant funds.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Are we getting new buses, uh, what's all included, it's a lot of. No, it's just an application, what are we applying for?
I'm sorry, Christine Welch Transit Services. This is the application process, this is a competitive grant. So we, the amounts, it may seem large, but it's, it's an ax, we may or may not receive anything from the competitive process. But yes, it's for buses, uh, we're no longer buying diesel buses, we're buying the hybrid or electric vehicles going forward with federal dollars.
Okay, do we have a charging station if we get electric or are they gonna?
We, that's, that's a part of the grant process as well, you can seek out funding for that as well. But right now we're running hybrid electrics, what we have in the city of Jackson now is four of those. And that's what our next purchase is going to be hybrid electric, that's diesel and electric. It, it, depending on the speed of the bus, it'll alternate out itself.
What about the bus seats that we've been asking for year after year after year, people still?
Shelter, and you mean benches and shelters?
Yeah, that's a good way, keep them off the ground, because a lot of them have to sit on the ground.
Like that.
That's, that's also a part of the grant process as well, so we have, we're seeking out funding, those are very expensive. To, uh, place throughout the city, and now we're no longer just placing them, you have to go through an easement process from that landowner if it's not on city property. It takes a little longer than it used to.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Harley?
Yes, first of all, um, um, J-Trans over in my ward, and I just want to thank you, Ms. Welch. Uh, these other issues worked out, we're gonna work those out, but you've been doing a stellar job in keeping that facility. It's, it's, it's the best-looking facility along that Highway eighty corridor in that area. And I would, uh, I would hope that, uh, we have a lot of vacant buildings and stuff over there. Perhaps if you need more, a room for a bus expansion, if, if we can get, you know, this twenty, what, twenty-eight million dollars? A portion of it, and you need expansion, there's plenty of vacant buildings along that area for you to, uh, move into, including the electric charging stations. And I do believe that, I am encouraged that we are moving towards the future.
Yes.
These electric vehicles, they're, they're increasing forty percent over the last, uh, uh, over the last two years in, in the U.S.
Yes.
And, uh, we have to think realistically, so our next footprint need to include something definitely for them. But thank you for the job and, uh, the presentation of that J-Trans facility along the Highway eighty corridor, and look forward to.
Thank you, sir.
To more space there.
Okay.
All right, any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries seven zero. Uh, colleagues, I want to go ahead and move to item fifty-one in case there are any questions for those that weren't here during work session, uh, yesterday. And we do have an amendment to this to make sure that the, uh, order reflects. So let's get this on the floor, and then we will need to amend it to make sure that the order is reflected right. All right, go ahead.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Central Mississippi Planning and Development District to develop a redistricting plan for the city of Jackson, Mississippi pursuant to section twenty-one dash eight dash seven CI of the Mississippi Code.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moving a second to twice, uh, uh, this item is down the floor. Colleagues, we have an amendment, uh, uh, as given to us by legal. If I could get a motion and a second to accept it.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, it's been moving property second, uh, and basically what that, that title, that amendment says, order, uh, memorializing that the city will retain Central Mississippi Planning and Development District to provide counsel and assistance to the city council for a purpose of redistricting and mandating that the city of Jackson and its contractors will comply with all laws pertaining to the redistrict and settling forth guidelines for the same. All right, so now we have it on the floor as amended, uh.
Another amendment, Mr. President?
Uh. Yeah, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Mr. Stokes?
Abstain.
All right, it's six, one abstention, now we have the amendment, I mean, now we have the item on the floor as amended. Uh, let me, let's get them up to explain the process.
Okay.
Um, and everything, and I, I want to just state this for the record, for clarity, because there's been a lot of confusion around this. CMPD is not going to receive a contract and then go out and draw lines or draw several maps and come back to the city and say, here you go, pick one. This is a process where they will provide technical. This is a process where they will provide technical assistance. And that technical assistance, they will tell you about it. But the plan is that all seven of us will have a special call council meeting and then also allow the opportunity for public comments, one or two, however many we need to do to, so that we can do this all seven together instead of doing like the old days, one or, or two at a time. But if you would, just go ahead and introduce yourselves and kind of talk through the process. Then Councilman Stokes, I'll analogy after that.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. I'm David Wade, Director of Planning and Management for CMPDD. This is Gray Oates, Principal Planner with CMPDD. As far as the timeline, I think in the interest of meeting our deadlines, we, we discussed the idea of having a recess meeting in our office where we can put the maps up on the screen. And as you correctly pointed out, we are simply the technical arm. We will not draw the maps. You will draw the maps. We will redraw the lines as advised by you guys. I think that will be the most efficient way. We're kind of on a, with elections coming up next year, we're on a deadline to get this accomplished. Hopefully by first of July to allow your city clerk and to meet with the county circuit clerk, the election commissioners. We'll make sure voter rolls are straightened out so we minimize any voter confusion going into next year's elections.
All right, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have an amendment that we include Attorney Kara Rhodes.
I don't, I, I don't have no problem with that. If we want to do it as a mediator, I, I. So my suggestion would do, that we do a separate contract with Kara Rhodes as a mediator. We don't know what his cost would be.
But that's Kara Rhodes.
Yeah, I mean, the NAACP number free to come to me. But the, one of the things was to try to save, save costs because, and just deal with them strictly ourselves. But I don't mind doing it. But I would say that we need to find out if we want to hire him as a mediator in this process. We need to find out what his price would be. Yes, Councilwoman Lee.
So with CMPDD, it would be $25,000 for the technical portion of it? And then to do our voter rolls and all that? My concern is we all are gonna want our lines drawn a certain way. How will it be equitable?
Equitable?
I mean, I want to make sure that we're not encroaching on each other's lines so that we can favorably benefit ourselves.
Correct. And I think, again, in the interest of time, that's why it would be more productive if we could all meet at the same time. I think meeting at the same time will allow us, and allow you guys to make those concessions amongst each other to get this map drawn. I don't think we really have the luxury of time to, with a lot of back and forth. But one correction I want to mention, you mentioned the voter rolls. That's not, not what we do as far as updating your voter rolls. That will be the, the county circuit clerk as well as your city clerk.
Mr. Griselle, do you have anything to say on this?
I didn't, I didn't say anything. But I, I, I'm very anxious to go ahead and get this process started.
Yeah. Colleagues, let me just, this is, this will be the first time in Jackson's history that our redistricting is started and decided upon in a public meeting, allowing public comments and, and, and allowing, and being open to the public where everybody can be there. And it's interactive. So for example, let's say when they read out the percentages. Do you have that? Can you read those percentages out? And I just want to kind of, you just kind of give people, because a lot of people are confused with how it's traditionally been done. And this way of just eliminating the middleman and dealing direct, because everybody deals with CMPDD anyway since they know all the information. But, you know, if, when we understand those percentages, Councilwoman Lee, if you say, hey, well, what if you take presidential, I'm just giving an example and say this, then, you know, there are ways for all of us to work together instead of going to an attorney one by one, two by two. And all, you know, we keep having ongoing meetings over and over and over and over again. If you go with those percentages.
Yes, so what I'm going to share with you are based on the 2020 census data.
Do you have a copy you can pass out to us?
I don't have a copy. I can hand you right this second.
Can you give it to the clerk? Let her make a copy?
Let her, let her read it out.
Let me, let me read it and then absolutely.
I'm gonna write it down.
So the ideal population for each ward, if you take the total population from 2020 divided by seven, the ideal population for each ward is 21,957 people. I will share with you the deviations from that. This is the percentage either high or low from that ideal population for each ward. Ward one is 15.41%.
High, low?
High. Ward two is negative 1.24%.
Negative what?
1.2.
1.24% negative. Ward three, negative 6.24%. Ward four, 1.99%.
Positive.
Positive. Ward five, negative 12.71%.
12. what?
Seven one.
Seven one percent. Ward six, negative 2.06%.
0.2?
2.06.
2.8? I don't have my hearing aid.
And ward seven is 4.86%.
4.86?
Percent?
Positive?
Positive, yes, sir.
All right, ward seven is positive, ward one is positive.
And ward, and ward four, Griselle is positive.
We're very consistent.
Okay, let me put, because I got, I got ward four minus 1.99.
No. Did you say plus? It's plus.
It's plus.
Plus 1.99.
Right.
Three is minus 6.24. Two is minus 1.24. Five is minus 12.71. Six is minus 2.06.
Yes.
And seven is plus?
4.86. If, if you can explain the 10%.
Deviation?
Yeah, just explain it for.
Yes, based on the Voting Rights Act, federal law, in the interest of the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment, you've heard the one person, one vote rule. Each ward should have roughly the same amount of persons in each ward. But they recognize, federal law recognizes we can't get exactly the exact same number of persons. So they allow you what they call a top-to-bottom deviation not to exceed, not to meet or exceed 10%. And what that refers to is when all this is said and done, your lightest population ward and your heaviest population ward, the combined difference, percent difference, should not meet 10%. So in other words, if your lightest ward is maybe 5% low, your heaviest is 3% over. The combined, when you combine those, you got 8%. So we're within the allowed.
But there's no longer preclearance.
Sir?
There's no longer preclearance.
There is not. But I will say I've been doing this for 31 years. And up until 2013, when the U.S. Supreme Court struck down the preclearance requirement, I never failed to get one precleared through Department of Justice. We were always successful. We would send a packet for each redistricting plan we did. We averaged doing 20-something every 10 years among our cities and counties. And we were always successful in getting those precleared. So we operate under the same, the same guidelines, the same rules we always did.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Banks.
Yes, Council.
Yes, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I had a conversation, Mr. Stokes, with Mr. Banks about the issue you're raising. And I hear what you were saying. And the concern, you know, would be that if we, if we try this and we just absolutely hit stone walls, then I, you know, I think we would need to hire a mediator. But I do think, given the shortage of time, this is a great way to start. And I do support the notion of having a meeting together and let's just start hammering this out. You know, I've found that over the years, generally speaking, on most issues, we can come together and reach consensus and agreement, not all issues, but most. But I do reserve the, the thought that we may need to hire a mediator. And if we do that, we would need to have a contract and a price, a not-to-exceed price. And so I do hear what you're saying, Mr. Stokes. And you and I are not too far apart on, on what we're thinking on that. Thank you.
All right. I don't have conversation with Kara. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, item carries six one. All right.
Thirty.
Dave, we'll, we'll, we'll get with you on some dates. All right, let's go back to.
Thirty.
Yes.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service purchase order request for RS Electric Services for the repair of pole lights at Union Station J-Train parking lot bus base.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Councilman.
When we say at Union Station, then J-Train parking lot, we're saying across from where Greyhound, right? Let me envision.
The base feathers to Gallatin Street where the J-Train buses pull in.
Yeah.
Those two bases on that side.
So we're getting ready to put lights up?
No, we're retrofitting the lights so that, similar to what we've done on Highway 80. It's very dimly lit now. We're pulling out an hour earlier. So we're trying to light it up so for the safety of our passengers.
Okay. Now, how do we prevent homeless and others from shooting their lights out, damaging their lights and those kind of things?
I replace them in budget for it. That's the only option I have. It's an open area.
Yeah, that, that might be a chief question.
Well, I'm a grand chief, but ask because they're gonna bust out all the windows at, at Union Station and crawls from it and, you know, and everything else. But you feel confident that.
You said a homeless man shot the lights out?
No, I'm saying.
No, we've been, we've been, we've been putting traditional bubs in for years. We have not had a problem with them destroying the bubs. It's just that it's old technology. And as we did on Highway 80 last year, we retrofitted it to LD lighting so that it would light up, be more visible for the safety of the passengers.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. You don't have to.
All right, we good? Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter into agree. Order authorizing the mayor to enter into the agreement with Taylor Power Systems to provide routine generator maintenance at the J-Train Administrative Maintenance Facility, 1785 Highway 80 West, Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service purchase order request for GCW Pavement, Pavement Services LLC for the installation of benches in the new bus shelters throughout the public transportation system, J-Train, for fiscal year 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, yes.
Vice President Lee.
Ms. Welch, I know it says undetermined. Do we happen to know where?
Currently, these are the ones that we installed last year. We, when we initially ordered them, we had one bench in the interior of the shelters. Of course, the demand has increased, so we are adding an additional bench in each one of those shelters.
What's the possibility of, of new shelters in each of our wards? I really hate seeing people sitting on the ground like Mr. Stokes said. What's the possibility of us growing? Is it going to be dependent on that grant that we?
No, it's gonna be, we are, we have some funding, but this is a very expensive undertaking. So I cannot promise that I will be able to hit every ward. On this last go-round, I think we placed everyone in most of the wards where the larger ridership is at.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you. How much are these shelters gonna cost?
The one that we purchased already?
Well, I'm talking about the seating. How much is that gonna cost? Seven hundred, the benches?
The benches, we've already purchased the benches. This is just for installation. We have them already.
Okay, how much to install? Is it 770?
Uh, hold on, Councilman Stokes. 770 is the portion that we're gonna use for federal, the match. The total cost is $3,850.
Yes, it, I, I know earlier you stated that we had to get easements.
These we've already done. These are the new shelters that went up last year.
Yeah.
All of those are properly installed, ADA compliant. And we did get easements for the ones, even the ones at Walmart where we have two, the largest shelters at Walmart on 18. We have an easement from Walmart.
No, I'm not asking about us getting easements. You stated early, earlier that the city would have to get easements in the time they want to put down benches. My question is, can the average day citizen put a chair at a location? Now, it's not a city chair. So it's not like we got to get permission or easement or anything else. But we must put something out for people to sit on because it's, at least in my ward, I don't want to speak for other wards. It's hard.
So he is basically saying if a church got their folding chairs and put it at the bus stop so that people can have an opportunity to see, can that happen?
I would not encourage that if it's a city bus stop because it has to be ADA compliant.
So you encourage?
If I put a bench down, it, it needs to be ADA compliant. That's what we're lacking in this city is compliance for ADA.
But if the church wants to donate a bench, you'll be glad to talk to them.
I'd be glad to work with them. We locate, get an ADA, work on getting an easement and follow the federal guidelines. I would be more than happy to work with them.
So the federal guidelines that's for you would not apply for John Q. Citizen?
But it's the city of Jackson's bus stop. It's gonna have to be accessible.
Somebody, somebody sit in the chair, in the folding chair and fall, they consider the city?
All right.
Unless, unless you want them to take it out on your bone and say, Councilman Stokes, put that.
They already at my bone. I told Mr. Wright about that. Dog, what I want to do.
For you to know though.
Is try to find a way we can get these citizens off the ground, especially these old ladies.
Okay. Understand, sir. And that's, that's, we're working toward that goal. Like I said, it's a very costly goal, though. I have about 800 bus stops throughout this city right now with our new bus system. And that's very expensive.
Two questions, Ms. Welch. One, just look at the feasibility of getting JSU logos on those chairs, I mean, on those benches.
I agree with you.
All right, I just want, I just want to make sure. Don't look at me like that.
So moved.
And then number two, just a question, just something that I'm just worried about. Because I know that Mr. Wright had the grass cut before the commencement this weekend at Jackson State. And, and I noticed that one of the stops is right there. Are, do, do you all have to wait on right-of-way cutting to service that grass? At, at, you know, at those stops? Or do you all have somebody that separately does that?
We're servicing the shelters.
Okay.
We cut the grass for all of the shelters. MB has a contractor who serviced all of the shelters here in the city.
Okay.
But no, we do not have a contractor, you know, for cutting of all those other 600-plus.
No, 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 I, I get, I'm just wondering if you have to wait on the right-of-way, or if you had your own contract. You had.
All of our bus stops are in, own city right-of-way.
Okay.
We don't have any bus stop signs that are on private property.
Okay. All right. Yes, Councilwoman Lee.
Mrs. Welch, I know in our ADA meeting, you mentioned that the ride, ridership was gonna increase, the fare. Could you explain that? And when will it roll out? And then will, how will the people know?
Okay, the paratransit fare now is $2. By law, we can, that should be $3. It should be double what the fixed route bus system is. The fixed route is $1.50. We did, in our study that we have implemented on March 4th, that was a recommendation. After discussion with the DOJ, that we have been encouraged to increase that to what it should be in terms of our percentage of paratransit. in terms of our percentage of paratransit ridership is right at about fifty percent of fixed route, which is too high. So we're gonna offer free service to those individuals with disability who choose to ride the big buses, the fixed route buses, in order to try to offset our ridership and our costs the city is exposed to for that paratransit service. Currently with that, uh, system that we use Ecoline, we can do robocalls as well as in our mass blasts, we're gonna do flyers. We're doing a full-fledged campaign the rest of this month to ensure by June first that the community is aware that, uh, starting that on June first, they will be paying three dollars one way per trip. But if they so choose, they can ride the fixed route system for free. We've already give, we started, uh, printing IDs back last fall. So they all are, currently have IDs that will allow them to board the bigger buses for free.
And so you have, um, the app already for them? And they'll see, will it be advertised on the app as well?
That, yes, on the city's website as well as going through the fixed route app, too. We have means now that we can, if you're registered for our fixed route system, we push our notifications to you.
And can you pay through the app, like a bus card? How does that work?
We haven't gotten there yet. That's a little expensive, but we're, we're gonna have to go there because the fare box system throughout this country is going to touch this as a result of COVID. And our system is set to upgrade our fare box in the next twenty-four months. So we're going to have to go there.
For another expense.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order revising the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the Department of Planning and Development Transit Services Division.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a forty-eight month rental agreement with the Advantage Business System for a Conica Monota Biz Hub C forty-five I Digital Color Copier to be used by the Zoning Division, a Division of Planning and Development Department.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Councilwoman Lee.
Do we not have a copier that, uh, the other planning director was using?
Ja, is he here? Mr. Keaton gone? Is he outside still? Okay. All right.
Kristi Metcalf, Deputy City Attorney. This is just for the zoning division. So each division needs a separate printer.
Kristi, can we look into a citywide contract?
I think we can.
They so come up on this agenda a lot. Just. All right. All, any, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Angela Carson, D B A Carson Consulting Services LLC to serve as project manager for the W K Kellogg Foundation-funded project, Economic Pathways to Human Dignity Building Occupational Opportunities in Economic Growth.
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No, Mr. President.
All right, so we have five, two. All right, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement and related documents with Blue Dot to provide local shopping incentive services in the city of Jackson, Mississippi for a period of one year and authorizing payment in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Blue Dot.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I'd just like to get more information on this.
Good afternoon. Mike Davis, Office of Economic Development. So Blue Dot, this item is gonna be provide us with a digital database of businesses here in the city of Jackson that we can append to our website.
Uh, why do we need that? Why is, why is this important?
Well, so that individuals can easily access and know where various businesses are to, to be able to patronize.
So it'll be categorized by like their specialty of service?
Correct.
Okay. And then they can go and find what they need? Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Yesterday, in work session, and I very well may be confused with my COVID brain, but, um, wasn't there some sort of incentive, um, initiative attached to this?
I, I do remember that being said. Can you?
Thank you.
Yes, I, I do apologize. I, I ran up here in haste to just jump right into it.
Please explain this.
So this item, the first one, is actually the, the City of Jackson incentive program to have people to shop local. You know, we see that, you know, people are going outside of Jackson to shop. Well, here is a incentive program to incentivize them to shop in Jackson. So this is gonna be great, most important for our mom and pops as well as our national franchises.
This just, this just shopping stores?
Uh, retail and service.
Can you click on it and then it'll take you to their website? And then we can purchase online?
So I'm not sure.
Not there yet.
I, I think it's, it's more wanting you to go into the store, uh, to, to be able to do that. So it's for commercially based businesses, not at-home businesses.
Would it?
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Would it be, uh, would you have links to the, to these, to their websites?
Correct. Yeah, we will have links.
So their website should have an online purchasing?
Well, as it relates to the, the incentive base of it, it's more so going into the store.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and I think it's a great idea to have just categories of this is what's happening, this is what you can find in the city of Jackson. Because a lot of times folks, you know, there is nothing here or I have to go outside to find something. So now they can just go on this website, say, hey, I need to buy men's clothes, click here, and it show you all the retailers around. I mean, I, don't let me explain it. Is that?
Well, yeah, exactly. Plus, if you're just walking by a store, you can get a notification. A sale is going on and you can utilize your incentives to be able to, uh, purchase there. So it's a very intuitive, uh, system that we trust is gonna really motivate folk to shop local.
Let, 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 let me ask a question, uh, Mike. And I, I like this. It just seems to me, just, just to me, that, uh, people do more eating than shopping in Jackson. Well, I'm just, I said to me, you got looking for my belly going over my belt. But, uh, it's, it just, it just seems that. I would get you. Hey, but it's, it seems to me, because when people, most of the time, especially visit Jackson, one of the first things they say, where can I get some of that good food? Is there anything similar? Or could food be a part of this?
So to my understanding, food is a part of it as it relates to.
Okay, so restaurants.
Service, service and, uh, venues and retail venues.
Okay.
Correct.
I, 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 well.
Is there a cost to the businesses or the restaurant?
All right. Come, come on, Councilman Griselle.
Is there a way we can see a prototype of this website? Um, maybe kind of test it out, maybe provide some input because, you know, marketing is very important. And I'm, I'm in favor of this because we need to definitely make sure that we're able to control the narrative for the city of Jackson. And I tell people all the time, Jackson has the best eateries you will find in this state. But I would really like to see this, uh, because I'm a visual person and kind of play around with it and kind of see, you know, what we're looking at.
Yes, so I would say, uh, Blue Dot's website, uh, and it's, it's spelled different. And I'm trying to, I don't have my glasses on, so y'all bear with me. So B L U D O T dot com, I believe is the, the website. You can go there and it'll show you the various, um, programs that they have. And there are other entities that.
Takes us to furniture.
Okay, that's the wrong spelling. Well, not the wrong spelling, but I gave you the wrong website. I do apologize. But I can send you a link, um, after this, um, meeting. I can go to my desk and, um, send you a link and you all can most definitely, uh, give it a test drive.
Let me, let me ask a question based on that, that, that question or statement. Are, are we ready to go forward with this? Or colleagues, are you saying that you want to look at it first? Go ahead.
Is there, is there something that, is this something that we could do in-house?
No, we, we, we don't have the infrastructure to be able to do, do something like that.
Any other questions or comments? Is there, is there unratedness or?
That, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
There, there is some unratedness for me. Um, again, I want to support this, but this isn't two hundred dollars.
All right.
Yeah. And I would really like to, to really kind of test this out just to make sure what we're getting, what we're voting on today.
All right. What you got? You got economic development? You have planning? All right, we'll, we'll, we'll put it, put it in your committee. All right. Uh, if, if we could withdraw the second in the motion, we'll put it in, uh, planning committee.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion.
All right, we'll, we'll put this in planning committee. If, if you could, uh, just, when we get ready to do it, just be ready to break a presentation.
Most definitely, we'll do that.
All right.
Okay. Sounds good.
Say it again? Yeah. Colleagues, so you want to, we're gonna put both of them in there. Uh, you hear me, Griselle?
Yes.
All right, so that's thirty-six and thirty-seven. We'll go to, uh, planning committee.
Mr. President, are they, are they the same? Are they grouped?
They're both, they both deal with Blue Dot and one is.
Oh, okay.
Right, they're, they're, they're different, but they're, they're the same company, correct.
Okay. Yeah, if we can see a comprehensive.
Most definitely.
Just like a presentation or something.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
Thumbs up. Do we know the date of this meeting so I can let them? Okay, sounds good.
All right. All right, so item thirty-eight? That's correct?
Yes.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service purchase order request for United States Postal Services for a privileged P O box.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Uh, this has been moving property second on this item, item thirty-eight. Why, why? Why do we need a P O box at this time?
My league with business development is for our business licensing office. So we receive paperwork as well as payments for business licenses.
And it doesn't come, sorry, Mr. President. It doesn't come straight to the office?
No, it goes to the P O box then to us.
So do you currently have a P O box?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're just renewing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, good deal. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order ratifying purchases and procurement of services from one year, from one vendor and authorizing payment to Jeff Coles Fence Company, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this, uh, on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order ratifying purchases and procurement of services from one vendor and authorizing payment to George Door Service, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
I don't see why we're moving.
I don't. I, I don't know. Is that a question or are you just?
What was the question?
I was just wondering why we're moving from one vendor to another, but I don't see him to speak on the item. But I'll vote for it's under a thousand.
Mr. Wright?
Forty.
Thank you. No, this is Keaton.
Is this the fence around the Transit Service Division? I mean, what is this?
This is George's Door Service. Overhead doors for J-Train. Okay. I'm sorry.
Christine Welch Transit Services, yes, this for the overhead doors. Uh, the failure happened where I busted the wash bay. There are huge doors, probably as height, as high as this ceiling or higher. The doors failed and that's where, uh, we have need security at. So we had an emergency.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order ratifying procurement of services from certain vendors and authorizing payment to said vendors and authorizing payment to the Mississippi State Department of Health Boiler and Pressure Vessel Safety Branch for inspection fees.
Second.
Let's move property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order ratifying procurement of rental equipment from H and E Equipment Services and authorizing payment to H and E Equipment Services, Inc., for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
Let's move property second on this. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Wright, can you kind of describe, um, type of rental equipment or what we're doing with this? Oh, this, uh, hold on a minute. This is, this is solid waste and we talked about it during the last meeting, I believe. This is probably for, uh, finish.
The equipment to.
To finish the construction. Right, of the sale. Okay, thank you. That's, it's not necessary.
All right. Yes, yes, Vice President.
Uh, Mr. Wright, I have, um, some streetlights out. Do I text you or who do I? Because I don't know who to call anymore.
No, uh, you can text, uh, Integis representative? I can send her that information.
The, the, the traffic lights. I'm.
Oh, the blinking traffic lights. No, that's, that's public work, yes. Uh, and since Ms. Weathers is here, I just want to just check on the status, uh, how are we doing on our, uh? and, and I'm sure this is for that sale. You need additional equipment for rental for that sale, this particular item, is that correct?
Lakeisha Weathers, solid waste. Um, yes, that was, the rental was for the sale development. That was the articulating dump truck that we rented. Um, currently, we are waiting, uh, Legal is finalizing the contract for the development of the sale.
Excellent, and, uh, just while you're here, waste tires, how are we doing?
We're doing well with our tires.
We, I, I'm telling folks that they call, uh, that eleven ninety-three by Tuesday evening, get on the list, they can have the, uh, tires picked up on Wednesdays.
And you're telling them correctly.
And the, uh, someone else came up with some ideas on uses of, uh, recycling the tires and I'll see if I can pass that along to you, but. Uh, and the other thing, how's our processor doing? I don't know, method is.
He's doing well. I mean, he, he has days where he's overwhelmed. Um, he has to stop and just process everything that's at the facility, but he's doing well otherwise.
Good, thank you.
Questions or comments? Ms. Weathers? Um, what's the best high school band in the city of Jackson?
Forest Hill.
And here.
Alright, I just.
Holloway.
Jim Hill, I'm sorry, okay? Near the sun.
Thank you, Mrs. Weathers, for everything you do.
Ms. Weathers, alright, uh, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Get him, Brian, we got two to one.
We don't have to talk about it.
We ain't got a fight.
The proof is out there.
Oh, my. Alright, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one to the Contract of Fountain Construction Company, Inc. for the Planetary Renovation Project.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, this item. Any questions or comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we have six and one abstention. Alright. Item forty-three, I mean forty-four.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the City of Jackson former chief James Davis and the Jackson Police Department in the matter of Melvin Williams et al. versus the City of Jackson, Mississippi et al. in United States District Court for the Southern District of Mississippi Northern Division Civil Action Number Three Twenty Dash C V Dash Seven Eight Five Dash D P J Dash F K B.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is any question or com- comments?
Question without getting into executive session. Without going to executive session or getting us in trouble.
I'll try not to.
What's the, what's the facts?
Uh, we briefed Sheridan Carr, Special Assistant to the City Attorney. We briefed the counsel on this case last, at the last meeting and you all took a straw poll. This is just for the payment of the First Amendment retaliation case.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, any, any other questions or comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Is there an amendment to number forty-four?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Withdraw the vote.
Alright, 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 uh, I need a motion to reconsider.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item number forty-four for the purpose of amendment.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and properly, uh, second that we reconsider. All in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, that's unanimous to reconsider. Let's go with item forty-four again, clerk.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the City of Jackson former chief James Davis and the Jackson Police Department in the matter of Melvin Williams et al. versus the City of Jackson, Mississippi et al. in United States District Court for the Division of Southern District of Mississippi Northern Division Civil Action Number Three Twenty Dash C V Dash Seven Eight Five Dash D P J Dash F K B.
You read that.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and properly seconded, that's, alright, what's? Alright, so colleagues, I have an amended copy as presented by Legal. I need a motion to second to accept it as presented by Legal.
So moved.
Second, alright, it's been moved and properly second, just give this check to make sure. Moving properly second that we, uh, amended as presented by Legal. Uh, is that correct? Alright, all in favor?
Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Opening up.
I don't believe I have the amendment in front of me. Can someone?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, she's from top.
Just briefly, we, um, took out one of the plaintiffs. They, they presented to us that they were going to withdraw some of their claims, but the first mediation didn't work out, so now they have, uh, reasserted those claims, so we're including that person in this actual settlement. If you look at the fourth, one, fifth, whereas paragraph, we have an exception, one person withdrew because he's deceased. But now that person, the other person that was in the previous order is now reasserting her claims, but this should, well, this will, uh, get rid of her claims as well.
So will that, will that possibly be the?
I think I didn't know what you need, um, let me see.
I just want to make sure, you know, just for, from my understanding, that, that the initials are C T, is that okay to say?
Hold on.
That's correct.
Okay, alright, cause I was gonna send my picture.
Yes.
Alright. Alright, uh, we good?
Perfect.
Alright, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Alright, now we had the item on the floor, it's amended. Is there, is there anything else? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Huh?
No.
Okay, so I have six, uh, in favor, one no. Alright, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a thirty-six month rental agreement with Advantage Business Systems, Inc. to be used by the Office of the City Prosecutor.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, item carries unanimously, uh, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to extend and execute an agreement with Carol Warren and Parker P L S C to represent the city in annexation, annexation matters.
So moved.
Second.
This has been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I think, uh, yesterday we, uh, had a brief discussion about the location, uh, and this was to do with airport property.
Alright, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the compromise and settlement of a claim for workers' compensation indemnity benefits in medical in M W C C number one eight zero four two five seven dash P dash seven two six two dash E twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Tatum and Wade P L S C to represent the city in any and all litigation with Hyundai Motor America, Inc. and Kia America, Inc. and any others officers, agents, affiliates, or employees and their subcontractors and any related entities and any other potentially responsible or liable person or entity relating to or arising out of stolen ant or burglarized Hyundai or Kia vehicles in the City of Jackson and authorizing a payment of fees associated with said matter.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Alright, this has been moved and properly second on this item. Any questions or comment? Yes, sir, customer foot?
This a contingent lawsuit situation? Sorry?
I'm, I'm attorney Joe Tatum of Tatum and Wade Law Firm. I, I didn't hear the question, counsel.
Is this a, a contingency lawsuit situation?
It's a completely contingency with all expenses being advanced by my firm at no risk to the city.
And what's the percentage of the contingency?
Uh, I was told thirty percent as a compromise from what we were asking of thirty-three percent, uh, but I was told a thirty percent.
Well, it needs to, we need to know for sure, what?
Well, it's thirty. Thirty percent.
Sheridan Carr, Special Assistant to the City Attorney, um, in the fourth whereas paragraph, it says that the, uh, firm requested thirty-three point three percent, but we negotiated that down to thirty percent. And in the last whereas paragraph, it has it not to exceed thirty percent, so I think that should cover your question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comment?
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. President, I, I want to thank Legal, um, for getting that percentage, um, closer to what we thought it should be, and I appreciate, um, the law firm for agreeing to do that.
Good job.
Good job, alright, uh, any other, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item carries unanimously. Alright, uh, next item.
Order authorizing the president of the Jackson City Council to sign an engagement letter with Brown, Ewan, and Company Certified Public Accountants to perform the municipal audit for the City of Jackson for the fiscal year which ended September thirty, twenty twenty-three.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Banks, Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, thank you, um, I just wanted to, um, talk a little bit, I wanted to ask you, at the last uh, work session that came before us and we met, and it was my understanding at that time that we were going to um, initiate an R F Q, uh, a request for qualifications, because we truly don't know how many firms may be out there that want to do this work. And so, um, I would just like an explanation on why we did not go through that process.
Yeah, more so, one, because we really hadn't done it before. Number two, uh, is because of the sake of time, uh, because we're so behind on this twenty-two audit. Uh, and we have some things that have to be done. Um, and, you know, I think that right now we just need to reestablish a better relate, better working relationship between the auditor and the city staff. Cause it seem like that the impasse is there, keep prolonging, uh, us being able to get, uh, a finalized product so that we can move forward with other businesses and, uh, or with other city business. So that, that is my reason for going on, uh, so that they can get in and do the test work necessary, so that.
Fo- fo- follow up, Mr. President, um, I'm sorry, um, I, I really appreciate and hear what you're saying, but, um, we just don't know who's out there, and we have discussed now the fact that we can do an R F Q and that we should, and we've been discussing that for some time now. And so, with all due respect, um, to you and your efforts on this, um, without doing an R F Q to do a search on what other firms, especially in the City of Jackson, might be willing to come do this work, I cannot support this item, um, today, and so I just wanted to say that. And also, Mr. Banks, um, you know, there were questions about this firm, um, when, when we, when, well, these particular auditors, back when we changed several years ago, um, there were some issues, and so that's why I also feel like that we need to do an R F Q to see if we can get, um, some, just to see if there's anyone else out there who might be willing to do the work.
Yeah, uh, uh, yeah, I, I hear you, but I, I think that, uh, Robert Salton and David Ewan did a good job with clearing up, uh, the information or the misunderstandings that have happened in the past, and I think the mayor also made his comments toward it. Counselor McFoot?
Yeah, I, I'll, I share, uh, the concerns that, um, that Ms. Lindsay has about the, first of all, you know, we are way behind the eight ball on the audit stuff. The last audit we filed, I think, was for the year ending September thirty of twenty twenty-one, and this is twenty twenty-four. And the, the audit that we're working on right now, is my understanding is, for the year that ends September, that end, ended September twenty-three, excuse me, September thirty of twenty-two,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, was due to the state auditor back in September thirty of twenty-three, and we're still working on that. Um, so I think we, we've got a lot of internal issues on our side of not getting the data there in to the, the auditor that's, you know, working for us now, and then to suddenly change horses and bring in another group. I've got issues with, with, um, you know, the, the fact that we're so far behind the eight ball, and I'm not sure if the optics look good for us to just change the auditor now and go and somebody, somebody new, so I've, I've got issues with it.
Yeah, Castleman Foot, I, I, I did give a lot of thought to, uh, that, he, here's the, the reality, one, when it comes to the employees and the department administration, the council members have no authority whatsoever to direct them. Alright, so they deal with what's requested and their time to get it. Now, it just seems to me that, um, we can't go another year with the back and forth that has been going on. And it seems to me that the wisest thing to do for the sake of time is to explore a new relationship, uh, because of the frustrations from what I've seen on both sides, but more so on the side with the city employees. Um, where there's the feeling of, uh, being nitpicky. And so, at the end of the day, regardless of who we change to, whoever we deal with, gonna have to work with those that are over there. And, you know, it seems to me, based on the conversations we had during work session, that this group that had previously worked with the city has a long history, worked with the city, uh, has the butt advantage point of using the value of their relationships, but working with the people that are currently employed there. And it seems like that there will not be a, a good enough working relationship to get anything done timely with the current auditor and the people that are there now. And, and the only thing that could change is work.
Mr. President?
As far as.
Mr.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm, Mr. President? I just want to be clear that, you know, I agree with the notion that we should shop around. I don't think you should ever get interrupted with your auditor. Um, but, um, I don't feel like we've shopped around, and so that is my concern.
Alright, Castleman Harley?
Yes, Mr. President, um, I, I think we, we need to explore the, the root causes of our, some of our, our issues here. Um, and, you know, we do have a member of the current audit team that's in the audience, and I was wondering if you wanted to perhaps, if this body would allow a comment to say some, one of the root causes of, 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 of delays. And it's, again, uh, if you would allow that.
Yeah, I can, look, Castleman Harley, I, I, I don't mind that, but what I don't want to happen with the time that we spend, especially with we gotta go into executive session, is for him to lay out what has basically happened previously, him to lay out, and then the, and then the division of finance to lay out their grievances, then it goes back and forth. There's an impasse.
I understand that.
No, no, listen, there's an impasse. The people that work over there, we have no authority to change, they are there. It is apparent that there is not going to be a good working relationship going forward. And we have a timeline, you know, now look, I, I, I plan on calling on the, calling for the vote on this. You know, uh, to get this firm that used to be Banks, Finley, and White, you know, to, um, go ahead and do this, I mean, but I, I do know that we have some timelines. Uh, especially with the Planetary. And that clock is ticking now. Uh, like, really quickly ticking. Uh, so, uh, I'm, I'm ready, I'm just ready to call for the vote, uh, on this, and, you know, uh, it's a vote on the record. And if our audit is delayed, and if we don't get it, then we'll see.
Yeah, I was just mentioning since, uh, since he's here, maybe, uh.
Okay.
Alright, if, if, alright, alright, yes, Mr. Hodges?
Mr. Banks, one quick thing, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the agenda item number forty-nine, at the bottom of this document, it says Dee Martin and Lumumba. And I think that's erroneous, I think it should be Banks.
That might have been a typo illegal, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank, but thank you for pointing that out. That might have been clerk, that, was that like a mistake, a typo or something? Say it again? Uh, 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 from, from my understanding, the administration has made it clear that they understand that it's our, it's, it's our, yeah, uh, so that might have just been a standard typo or something, from my understanding, is that, is that what?
Okay, okay.
So if, if we got amended, we can amend it, uh, Mr. Hodges?
Certainly, Scott Hodges, Tan, Brown, and Russ CPA firm. Uh, I'm willing to answer any questions if you have any, uh, my main thing I want to say is changing auditors, it's not going to fix your problem. The problem is, the financial statement draft is not ready, the information has not been provided. It has nothing to do with the audit firm, it has to do with the city's finance department not providing the information. And so you can hire any auditor you want, but the delay would be the same.
Yes.
Alright, go ahead.
And, and I realize that, I understand that. But there are some internal problems that we are fixing. Hopefully, it will result in less, uh, errors, less, uh, uh, more cohesion within the, the finance structure, and I, and I agree totally. The horse we ride, it, it won't matter until we fix the issues that we have. Uh, and I think, uh, you know, again, I just, I, I recognize that you may have had additional comment, but, uh, but I appreciate your service and everything you've done for the City of Jackson. And, uh, just wanted to hear you out.
And, and the other comment I would have is that, as has been mentioned, Brown and Ewan is the predecessor firm of Banks, Finley, White, the previous firm, which was a regional firm, now they're the same people, they're just the local firm without the regional ties that you had issues with before, the reason we were brought in to correct those issues with the previous audits. So you're jumping back in the same boat you were before, you've got the same problems with the finance department, even if you change auditors, and now you're going back to the previous auditor that you had a problem with before that we have, were brought in to correct.
Yeah, I.
And so we're pointing out these issues to you each year that are not being corrected, and so now you're taking it back to the previous auditor.
Yeah, you, you know, the, the previous audit, they did have an opportunity to present or be present at the last round, you know, I don't want to go into that. I, I will say, just for the record, since this was mentioned, that there was only one problem and was fixed within thirty days with the previous auditor, they were not, with, with the over fifteen years of experience that they've had with the city, they've never been late. Alright, um.
May I?
Mr. Melonbecker, did you have anything that you want to say in response? You just gonna kind of leave it, alright, Mr. Hodges, you have something else you want to say?
I have something.
Uh, we had prior period adjustments that were miss, that were necessary when we did the first year's audit. We had about five pages of corrections, millions of dollars of corrections that had to be made to that prior year audit report that were not identified by that previous auditor, that were identified by us. The audit correction that they made to their report was one that we pointed out to them, and they modified the report, and then we found more errors after the fact when we got into the next year's audit, just to clarify that.
Alright, uh, again, um, Mr., Mr., yeah, Mr. Foot?
I just gonna say that, I, the, um, this is a messy situation we're in, I mean, and, and the, the auditor's job isn't to, um, come in and do all the work, they're basically a ref, like a referee function. And, and we've got a lot of incomplete passes, a lot of fumbles that, that unfortunately our finance department has made. With a lot of them involve invoices, which is why we've gone through the exercise with paying the invoices and all this other stuff, so. So a lot of it is, is, you know, the, we don't want to shoot the messenger. And, and, and that's what I worry about is, you know, um, a year from now, we'll be shooting the messenger. And 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 that's what I worry about is, you know, um, a year from now, we'll be shooting the messenger again because we still have behind the eight ball. Um, I'm trying to say this in a.
I I hear.
Light way.
Yeah, no, I I hear what you're saying.
But it's really, we've got to get our act together. And and we don't want to just throw the, with the latest auditor under the bus so we can ignore the problems, our organizational problems.
So I I I hear what you're saying and and, you know, let let me just say this. Um, why I know that Scott is here, the employees, which I don't know, the employees that actually do the day to day, which I don't know if any of you all had the opportunity to talk to, to hear their side as well. I think it is a very frustrating sit- no, I know it is a very frustrating situation to be, regardless of what we say, we got to at least try to find where there is a solvable relationship so that we can get our need. We can't go till August and still not have an audit. Then all the work that was done on planetarium, we gonna lose it. All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, uh, and and I, uh, first of all, thank you uh for stepping up. I have spoken with members of the finance department. They agree. If they can't get some of the issues fi- fixed, regardless of the of the auditor, it's still, it's still broken, okay? It's still broken. And so I am not inclined to support us moving haphazardly into another auditor until we can get the problems fixed. Or else the next auditor is just going to be reporting the brokenness.
Well, uh, at least we tried. But if, again, we, you you just heard the auditor say, uh, you just heard him say that he still don't have information. Evidently, there's an impasse with the information he's requesting. I, I, you know, I I think, and I've heard somebody say it's wise for, you know, to move or to change auditors after a certain period of time. Now, this is one, two, this is the third year, if not third, it's the second year of this being extremely late. And these similar issues, even before you got here, similar issues going on with the same email exchange. And then finance gets you the information. Then you ask for the information back a different way. Then they get you that information. Then you ask for the information back again a different way, and you get that information. Instead of just somebody taking a self over there, sitting down with them and saying, this is what I need, it looks like this, and just going over it, instead of all this back and forth. I'm sick of the crap. So I think in the best way, we need to just move forward so that we can have an opportunity to get something done timely. Now, this fail, it failed. I could at least say I tried. All right. That's fine. We we'll call for it. All right.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I I hear what you're saying, or what I was trying to say to you is that over the years, the uh Department Administration and audit may not have been on the same page. I think as council members, they're concerned about a vote today where they're changing the thing. Could we hold this item to the next meeting so everybody can have a talk with Doc with the administration and everybody we need to speak with, and then let's make a sound decision? I think you're concerned about the planetarium. A lot of. Yeah, a lot of us concerned about with that, we still don't know where the fund balance stand. And that's money that we really need to have to make improvements in these neighborhoods and everything else. So could we hold this item to the next meeting, give everybody a chance to talk to each other?
Yes, yes.
Councilman Stokes, I don't mind leaning to your wisdom there. And I I think that's a very important point because here we are, two years out, making decisions on fund balance that we don't even know where it is. Uh, and you you know, I, you know, um, at some point, you get tired of hearing, it's their fault, it's his fault, it's their fault, it's his fault, it's their fault, it's his fault, it's their fault. At some point, you get tired of that crap. Um, and and, you know, um, and so and so if one entity can't be removed, then you try to remove one or replace the city hopefully, and pray that there's a better relationship. Uh, so uh, unless uh, call, there are colleagues that want me to go ahead and call for this vote. Um, I will hold it out. If I could get a motion to be second withdrawn, we'll hold it out for, uh, let's put it in. Don't we have something in finance committee that we got to deal with anyway? We do? Huh? I'm trying to think. What what was it in finance committee? Those positions? Is that what, is that's what's in there? They they were, all right, let's put it in finance committee. Let's put it in finance committee. All right, who who made the motions? Oh, okay.
I would draw mine.
I would draw mine. All right. Uh, thank you, Councilman Stokes, for that wisdom. Uh, we uh will put that in finance committee. All right. Any other questions or comment? All right, yes. Go ahead. You want to mention something on that?
Yes.
Before I close it up? Go ahead.
I just want to know, where are we with munis access? I want to be able to print all of my uh three one one reports and bring them to a community meeting. But I can't access, we can enter into the system, um, our trouble, a a trouble ticket, a ticket. But I can't follow up to see the progress. But I have a neighborhood president who wants to see the progress of all the issues we've turned in for him, but I can't access the report. So I need help. I need to see all of my ward two issues that I have put in the system.
Councilwoman Lee, you need to get with Andy Boone, and he can help you figure out what your issue is within the system. And then if it can't be figured out in time by your meeting, he can print that for you.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, and Mr. President, you hadn't asked if there was any further comment. My comment is this, simply.
Uh, the item was off the floor. She was making, the item was off the floor. She was making a comment about three one one, about her exit.
I I know what she, but you had mentioned if there was any other comments on that. And I didn't know if her item was on the floor or not.
No, it's not an item. She was just mentioning a question.
My comment is this, we need to fix our financial issues. And that will lessen any phone calls, any emails. That will lessen the amount of of correspondence that's even needed, regardless who who the vendor may be, to provide the service. So the the priority should be, let's get the issues fixed. And to that note, uh, I I think that we need to have those discussions internally because I believe that regardless of who we has as a vendor to do this, they, we don't need to work them uh to death if we if we're having problems internally. And we shouldn't be blaming things on them. And I would love to have someone suggesting an RFP. I don't know if there was a a council, and I don't know if a RFP is required. But I'd love to see if there is other options out there and uh for us to to look at. But I think the priority need to be fixing internally the things that are broken because whoever steps up, if we are not fixed, then it's going to be a multitude of uh of correspondence. Because that's their job, is to look at, uh, look for those errors.
So so just just to be clear, what you're communicating is that the reason why this stuff is held up is the people in the Department of Finance need to get their act together. Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is this, take one thing, invoices. We've had numerous discussions on invoices.
I just want to be.
And 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 I would, and I will be clear. We've had numerous discussions on invoices. And until we have a a good plan on how we're managing those, I think they've come up with uh asking for additional positions. Uh, I think those positions need to be looked at in a way that they can help relieve the entire process uh and control and discipline within invoices.
Yeah.
And now, if it, and if if that kind of stuff don't happen, then there will continue to be other things and calls and correspondence. Yeah, and notwithstanding that there may be some communication issues. But let's alleviate the amount of work and let's get our own act together in an organized fashion. And if we are to uh uh deviate and go to a different uh uh vendor, let's not settle them with the continual of process, uh, problems that we've having.
Yes, Dr. Omar.
I'd just like to say that during this discussion, we understand that there've been, there are two sides to this issue. And the fact of the matter is, we are at an impasse because there is a lot of finger pointing back and forth. I also want to remind um the council that we have put to, put before you a plan for reorganizing the finance department that would help them become more efficient and address some of the issues that have occurred. Part of the problem is they just don't have enough people to get the work done. It's not that there are people over there not doing the work. It's not that there are people over there who are uh doing the work incorrectly. It's at a point where we need to reorganize the department and take into account the roles that each individual has to play and provide them with the additional personnel that they need. So this this fix ourselves, we've been working very hard to fix the issues that have, not just in the finance department, but through throughout the city. And what we need is cooperation in making the changes that are necessary to become more efficient and provide the information to outside vendors that are needed. So we, the administration is not a part of this contract. This is the choice of the council as to how they move forward. As a matter of fact, as my understanding, it's the only contract that you all are are statutorily allowed to make. And so I would s- suggest that whatever decision you make, you make it expediently so that we can move forward. We're holding up a bond, uh, there, we uh stand to be in noncompliance on federal grants because we don't have an audit. We just need to get this matter resolved.
And Dr. Mari, I agree with you. I agree with you a hundred percent, especially about.
Hold, 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 point, point, point order. Do we need to put this back on the floor so we can have a discussion? Because I'm I'm looking, yeah, 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 we we finna have a whole blown discussion. We got nothing on the floor. All right. Item fifty.
Uh, I I would love to.
Oh, you want to put it back on the floor?
I would love to have it back on the floor, just for a little. Well, I think it, I think it will be helpful because I think.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, you have put this in committee where we will have lots of opportunity for discussion. And then we can resolve this issue hopefully in committee. So I would like to suggest that we leave it in committee and and move forward.
All right, thank you. All right, item fifty.
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, approving an employment agreement for the Jackson Police Chief, Assistant Chief of Police and the Ja- and Jackson Fire Chief.
Let's move probably second on this item. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, uh, a lot of times when you move into the election year uh arena, the uh person or persons who's always under attack is not the candidates, but it's the chief of police or the fire chief. You have candidates who will say, well, I'm not gonna have this person as the chief of police. I'm not gonna have that person as the fire chief if you vote for me. My suggestion is, let's take politics. Let's take the chief of police, the fire chief, the assistant chiefs out of the equations. Public safety is too important. Public safety is too important of an issue that you play politics with. Normally, when you start talking about public safety at every level, from the FBI all the way down to a police department, you make sure that the public is safe. You don't have people upset because of politics at the fire chief that when a house is on fire, the fire department would not respond. Are people so upset at your police chief to a similar to what happened with the bus situation where the bus driver stopped picking up people? You need to take what I call first responders, the public safety. I love the discussion of any politics. And the way you do that is through a contract. My suggestion is, the chief of police and the two assistant chiefs and the fire chief, just put them on the contract throughout the rest of this term. At that point, politics will not have a place to making sure that the public is not safe. And that's what's the most important issue in any city, that your public is safe. And that's what we're trying to do with this item, guaranteeing the safety of the public.
Yes. First, let me start by saying, First Peter five and eight. Be sober minded, be watchful. Your adversary, the devil prowls around like a roaring lion, lion, seeking someone to devour. I give that scripture because I believe what's in front of us is an effort to give an impression that there is some negative relationship, some political circumstance that would put any of these individuals in jeopardy. And that just simply does not exist. And to be clear, not only does that not only not exist, you have a circumstance where you may be putting people in a different situation than what they want because a contractual employee doesn't have the benefit of perks, doesn't have the benefit of the the time that they accrue towards their retirement, right? Things that they want in their lives. Uh, secondly, you know, uh, the chief is only here because he wanted to be here uh at this particular moment to express how strong our relationship is. We meet every week so that the residents know. We meet every single week about strategies that we employ. We've had meetings as late as twelve AM, right? Right, chief? We we've been, we've been together at twelve AM in the morning, talking about strategies and how we keep this city safe. And so if you're gonna put something up, first thing you need to know is whether this is something that that is advantageous to the person that you're suggesting it for. Secondly, we need to remove these politics of what is trying to be suggested here and focus on the public safety. This creates more confusion. This creates a greater distraction from public safety than anything that is taking place in reality. And so, and lastly, even if we were talking about creating a contractual situation, let's talk about the obvious, the politics. Who's the one who has to submit a contract? Who would be the one that would have to submit a contract? So what are you really achieving when you don't do the contract to begin with? So I thought that that was important to say. Once again, I'll just finish because I needed, I needed this, right? I needed this, and I need this often for my encouragement and how I continue in a hostile situation. First Peter five and eight, be sober minded, be watchful. The adversary, the devil prowls around like a roaring lion, seeking someone to devour. Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I'm not a preacher. But they say the devil shall do quote the Bible. Uh, I want to make sure we understand that public safety is got to be on the forefront of this city. Before you move to the elections, while you go through the elections, you got to make sure that the public know that they're safe. Whatever kind of relationship the chief and the mayor has, I don't know. I don't talk to the chief about his business or the mayor and none of that. I never have. You can ask him. I never have, you can ask him. I didn't even talk to the chief about this issue. But this is not the first time the city of Jackson has done this before. So all these concerns now about here lose peril, the other chiefs didn't lose their peril. We had chiefs of police of Jackson to have contracts. It's not the first one. We not reinventing the wheel. This is the safety measure that you're gonna need going into this election that's gonna happen within a year.
Councilwoman Stokes, if you can explain, I, one, I think I hear what you, what you're communicating, trying to do. But when you talked about it previously being done in the city?
Yeah.
Could you go a little further?
Oh, yeah, we've had several chiefs, legal can research it, that have had contracts. It's not gonna be a contract for 10 years, 20 years. It'll be throughout this time that we in now.
And what's, what's, what's the aim?
The aim is to make sure you take government, and I'm talking about the police department and the fire department, out of politics. These are gonna be your public safety people. You don't want candidates who gonna say, well, you don't want to vote for this mayor because of this chief. And then people start banging on chief, don't trust the police department. What we have to do is say, we can't allow the fire department, the police department, which is human safety of your, of your citizens, to become a political issue. And you do not wait until people get on the books running for office and then say, we need to do something. You do it, it's a year before the election. Nobody trying to play fusses with the chief. We, we, we don't do that and try to turn him against the mayor and all that stuff. He's still the mayor, he'll still be chief, then the fire chief will be there. But politics will be out of the equation. Whoever run for these seats and these offices, they would not be allowed to then point to the chief. You got crime because of this chief, you need another one. Take that out of this. Make sure that when you have a fire, that the fire department gonna show up. Make sure that the police gonna come and do their job. They're not political. Police shouldn't be political. Fire shouldn't be political. And that's what we making sure that the public know. We're gonna give them a contract. Not a contract for 10 years, not a contract for 15 years. A contract to make sure that the politics is out of the equation. Now, anybody want to quote the Bible, you can quote the Bible all night and day. But this is not about the Bible, it's about the confidence that the city must have in the police department. And if you're gonna have this kind of confidence in the police department, let's make sure, let's make sure the chief, the deputy chief with all the assistant chiefs, they all on the same page. They're on the same page because they all will have a contract, just like the fire chief will have a contract. All this other stuff is, is fluff and nonsense. There's no hidden in this on this, it's been done. I bet nigger has researched this, they can tell it happened in this city. And the thing about being here so long, you see it happen and you know it has happened.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, sir, thank you. May, Mr. Banks, I had my mic on because I.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Were you finished? Okay, it was just speaking bad, but go ahead, Councilwoman Lindsay.
I'm sorry, I, I, I turned it on to get your attention, sorry. Thank you. Um, Mr. Stokes, I fully appreciate the intent of this item. Uh, we all know of people who, and, and I'm not saying that could happen now, but we all know of people who've lost their jobs during election season. And so I appreciate the intent of this. What I would need though, to be able to support it, is more details. And I'm speaking from, about this from a personal experience because the mayor would be the one to present the contract to the council. One time I got a contract for employment, I took the job, but it was two pages. Uh, I got a contract that was two pages of my duties. And then I kid you not, there were eight full pages following that and all the many ways I could be fired. And so I worry, they never had to use it, by the way, but I worry about this a little bit. I would like to see, um, a proposed contract attached to this item that would make me feel a little more comfortable about it. Um, I, I realize that we could always vote the contract down if we didn't like it. But I, I, I would really like to see, if there are, if there are contracts out there that exist, then I would like to see those because, you know, a contract can also be a trap. And so I think we need to be careful about how we proceed with this.
Uh, I have no problem, uh, with making sure we have the language of the contract and the contract because most of this information is gonna be already existing. The chief already has a salary. You're gonna put the salary he's making in as part of the contract. It's not like we are gonna try to say that we're gonna pay him a, a amount that he's not receiving, those kind of things. I'd be glad to work with legal and, uh, go through filling in the blanks and bring this item back, Mr. President, at the next, uh, council meeting. But at the same time, if there's any questions, please don't hesitate to ask and we'll be glad to find also some of the other contracts that the city of Jackson has given to males. And you have plenty of people that's still alive. Robert Johnson been the mayor and, and he had contract and you got people with the police department been here a long time who have seen chiefs with a contract. And it moved forward, it ain't nothing special. It ain't anything that would make this city stop running as a form of government that we must follow by the state of Mississippi. Thank you.
Mr. Um, Mr. Stokes, thank you. And, um, I just would like to see what has existed in the past. Um, and I'm not, I do not mean to imply that this mayor would use a contract as a trap. I didn't mean to do that. I'm just saying that for me to be comfortable voting for this, I need to see some examples. And I, I believe you, Mr. Stokes, and I really would like to see that. And so, um, um, anyway, I don't really know how this will all work since it's a department anyway, but I just need more clarity on it, Mr. Stokes, and I'll be happy to have a conversation with you on that.
Thank you so much. Mr. President, uh, I'm, I'm gonna redraw my motion.
Yeah, and, and I was going to, uh, ask if.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna be, I was going to ask if you would be comfortable in doing that. I, I too share, uh, a concern and that is that when, uh, when we have folks, uh, at this level uh, that are engaging in the safety of our people, not only that, but the safety of their own, own people, they need to be unhampered, uninhampered, uh, to, uh, to do their job. And, and I, you know, so I, I agree that there are, there are, are things, uh, that we need to be concerned about. Development of this ideal, uh, I think is still a little bit, is a little bit out there. But just suffice to say, um, anyone in those type uniform positions need to be given the fullest length of freedom to exercise their job. Not only for the citizens, but for, um, uh, but for the, the men and women that serve under, under them as well. And so that's, that's my only comment, whether this is the answer or something else. But I just, I just feel comfortable in saying that. Uninconverged completely, freedom completely. Only they know how to do that job and there should be no other outside pressures.
Mr. President?
Uh, I just want to close out by saying that at no time, uh, the chief of police approached me, asked me to do this item or asked me to do anything. Anytime the chief of police talk to me, it's police business, community meeting business, nothing about politics or, or who he work for, anything like that. And, you know, cause people will take the position where the chief must be behind. No, no, chief might not even, I don't know, he was a policeman when the city went through these chiefs having contracts.
Robert Johnson was one?
I think Johnson may have been one and.
He was around.
One before. They were, they were chief. More, you know, it's been some, it ain't like.
It, it was more done, but the majority of it was done specifically just during election time. That's what I'm telling you.
Yeah, it's not like some kids don't pull something like that.
Robert Johnson did with Robert Johnson, you know, something done way back.
It's plenty and it's done all over the country.
Okay.
Uh, you, you go, you go.
Yeah.
Dr. Omar been patiently waiting.
Yes, and I want her to say, it is a solution in search of a problem. That is what it is.
Okay, see, that would've come better after me. I just want, I just wanted to say that in my experience, having worked with our chief and his assistant chiefs and the fire chief and their assistant chief, there, I have full confidence that the character of these men and women, they will do their job regarding public safety regardless. They're not gonna, fire department is not gonna stop showing up to fires and police officers are not going to start ignoring 911 calls because we're in a political season. That's just not who they are. And, and I think our community knows that from their interactions with them. And I certainly feel confident that most, most anyone who has had interaction with these, uh, men know that about their character and their commitment to the public safety in, of the city of Jackson.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President, if anyone think that you getting ready to go through an election year politics and that names are not gonna be called, then I got you an island. I'm gonna see you in Georgetown, Paula Jackson. Let's take it out of the equation.
You got me an island in Georgetown?
An island, an island. Like Hawaii in Georgetown. Let's take it out the equation, that's the only thing I'm saying. You know it's gonna come up, I know it's gonna come up. In May, let's do something to prevent what's gonna happen in 2025. Public safety is the most important issue. And that's who we need to be concerned about, the public. Thank you.
All right, a, any more questions or comments? All right, so the request, Councilwoman Lindsay's request to, uh, I guess when this has happened in the past or this has been done, just getting information in. You know, one of the biggest things is even though I hear you, I wanna know why and just kinda see it myself, just to know.
Safety.
Well, this is item, so, uh, but I think Councilwoman Lindsay made a request, no? All right. All right, so y'all withdrew the second in the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, so that, that item's off. All right, so now we have, we did fifty-two. All right, uh, fifty-three, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, sir, we need to hold this one until the next meeting because nobody from the library system could be here.
All right, Councilwoman Lee in Industrial Park.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, we had a good meeting last week with our industrial park tenants. Uh, JPD came and chief, um, of course, was there to hear their concerns. I just found out that Coca-Cola is leaving. So I don't want to lose any more tenants. So we have a lot of issues with safety, loose dogs, lighting, and still the dumping. So I just need help in that area. And Chief Wade, if you could recap.
Joseph Wade, Chief of Police. Yes, we had a very, very good meeting last week over in the industrial park at Centos. They had a lot of concerns, but they had concerns that I think that we can properly address with illegal dumping, the roaming dogs, crime in that particular area. Uh, we're gonna take a strategic approach with directed patrols. We're also gonna have that conversation about what the blue light cameras look like. And of course, with our neighborhood enhancement team to focus on illegal dumping and also the ability to deal with these roaming dogs. So that's a huge issue, but now we have those conversations moving forward. And like I told him, this, that did not have to be a one-time meeting. I would like to meet quarterly or monthly. We'll bring the team back to the table and address their issues holistically so it can be sustainable going forward.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, uh, Councilwoman, I mean, the fact that y'all have this meeting, you, you have the people, you know, what I would do and, and I'm glad you, y'all already had these conversations just directed to the chief because I have full faith in their ability. Uh, I know that you've been working on an ordinance, um, for some time now with the cameras. Uh, I know legal has been trying to figure out how we make sure that we're, um, constitutionally sound. But I fully support that ordinance, its intent. Uh, I don't know, uh, how precisely, I, I think that it can be of assistance in this, this endeavor as well. Uh, I just want to make sure that, that legal gives us the AOK with the way that we, we put forth that ordinance and, and start moving on this.
Also, Mayor, we, um, applied for a blue light camera through Keep Jackson Beautiful and Hines County Economic Development Authority has a camera. We just need help getting it on the pole.
Okay. Talk to, you, well.
Deputy Chief Griselle.
Yeah, I know that.
About that and what it looks like.
There's, there's usually a coordination with the bucket trucks and how they get up there and everything else.
Yes. Thank you. All right.
All right, Council, Councilman Stokes, you got Mega Evans Library and McWhilly Drive.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mega Evans Library, the, uh, head librarian, others are calling because once the degree reach eighty, they're closing. And they've had several times that it's reached that degree and we know in the next few weeks it's gonna be hot, hot and hotter. And, um, I know we approved something, uh, a few weeks ago where we're gonna hire someone to come and make the necessary improvements to the, to the heating, air unit, the whole AVAC system. Right, what's the status? Uh, have we signed contracts or where we at with that, with the AVAC system?
Talking about this building?
Yeah.
Omega Evans.
Mega Evans Library, yeah.
Have we gotten to the stage? And I know that the prior stage was the design engineering, but have we gotten to the stage?
Yeah, that's what we're working on now, getting the design engineer to contract so that we can get it signed and move the funds around so that we can start this process.
What, what kind of timeframe do you think it might be?
Well, once we get the design engineer to do the design work, we have to put it out for bidding to take place and see what, how long it will take to get the equipment in. We do have a contingency plan in terms of if it does take some time, we can, uh, do some other things there to help with the cooling of that facility.
If, if I may, Councilman Banks.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, just for the public that is, that is watching a, a facility of that size, this doesn't permit us to just buy an air conditioning unit like we would do for our homes. It requires design work to be completed before the next step can be done. And so we're in a holding pattern because we're waiting on that design work to be done. And then we can make the subsequent contracts and purchases once we know what we're purchasing and what we're contracting for.
All right. Two months? Two months, three months?
Are, are you trying to see if they'll get it done before school gets back in?
Yeah, it's already hot.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's gonna be hard to nail down the time.
All right, thank you.
I just, not on this topic, but for the library commission, I'd like for them to look at Watkins Elementary to see if we could repurpose that for a library and it would serve Ward two and three and four. Um, it's just sitting there vacant, I would like for them to look at that.
All right, uh. McWhilly Drive, thank you. Uh, McWhilly is a nightmare. The. I don't know what word you should describe the people in that hotel that's starting to drift over to McWillie and the fear is that you closing Chestang, they're gonna be in Chestang. They already in abandoned homes in the Chestang area. And these are people come from all over United States, just out there begging. You know, I go to the little shopping center across from, uh, from, uh, the interstate to get gumbo and people come to you just, you know, the people with businesses have to deal with, the beggars just coming in and disrupting their, their businesses and everything else. And now we at the situation where, where the people who bought into McWillie, who purchased property feel like their investment is a nightmare. They had a beautiful dream that they were gonna do so much in that North Jackson area. And as one gentleman said, whenever you see a Waffle House close, the whole area about to shut down. And the Waffle House and I-55 and McWillie is gone. So, we got to get some relief in that Chestang area. Where you saying McWillie, where, that's where the people go get their church closed, one of the shopping areas. Those people going in and out of that place like they got the green light. Prostitutes, dope, in and everything else. And what hurts is that they feel like there's no hope. And once you lose hope by people, then they start giving up. And once they give up, then they gonna leave Jackson. And that's when people with no money or little money, taxes will go up that they can't pay. It's like getting blood out of a tourniquet. That's the reality if we allow McWillie to die. And there's own oxygen right now and they bout to pull the plug.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, Councilman Foot.
Yeah, the, and I, I share Mr. Stokes', um, grave concerns about that area. It's right across from Ward one, uh, in two different directions, but the, the Oyo Hotel is particularly, uh, um, ugly and, and makes a bad impression on people driving down the interstate. And we need to, I don't know what the status is, but that thing needs to be bulldozed, um, somewhere or another, I don't know. The, if whatever we can do to speed up the process of bringing that thing down would be really helpful.
Yeah. Uh, so there's already an active environmental, uh, court case against that, uh, particular property. Uh, Judge Reynolds has given me several updates. Uh, so this is not something waiting adjudication, it is in the process of adjudication. Uh, there have been several, uh, there have been several orders from the, the bench uh, for them to do, uh, certain things and, and I think at one point, there may have even been some, some jail time, uh, that was given out. So, it is a very, very active case. It is being worked on diligently, um, and, and this isn't one that, that we're waiting on the process to start.
Okay, because it, it affects everything else. It just, uh, it, as Councilman Stokes points out, it just.
Mr. President?
Do something about that better.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, I, my concern is that even though we got adjudication court cases going on, they are still trespassers. And just because you have a court case going on does not give them authority or criminal, the green light to be a criminal. They are trespassing. And if they're trespassing, then our police department can go get them out. We cannot allow these criminals to just take over areas of this city and say it's okay. And that's what they're doing. They're taking over this city and we losing business on that corridor every day. That corridor is so important for the tax base of this city. Car dealerships are leaving. Shopping centers are half full. We got to send the message that these criminals are not taking over Jackson. Now, if they are not gonna do this in Rankin and Madison County, then why we allowing them to do it in Jackson? They're criminals without a green light to trespass on private property. Thank you.
If, if I may, uh, that, that's the, the optimal word, private property. Uh, in a private property circumstance, the city can't take action against trespasses is illegal action pursued by the owner of the property. The city can't step in and enforce something that the ownership has not called on in that particular moment in time.
We can't get permission, Mr. Mayor.
If, if, if the owner.
You tell me we can't get permission? From the owners, we've done it too many other times.
Well, what's happening is there is a legal case against the ownership of the OVO. That, that is for, for what is believed and is being prosecuted as insufficient, um, you know, uh, measures to leave up to our city ordinances and codes. And so, the, the ownership, I, I, I don't wanna state and, and put the city in a predicament by stating what the ownership's position is. But we're pursuing the ownership right now unless the police get a call from the owner saying that they are trespassing. We can't pursue trespassing, it's not our property. If they were, I don't, I mean, I, I don't think, because we're a public entity, that we could pull a, a trespass on someone. But if it's not our property, we can't, trespass is not something that we can, we can pursue.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
The police see somebody breaking and entering, they don't have to go find the owner in New York City.
Miss, Mr. President, uh, just, just a comment here, I think we have a, an assistant chief outside. But I think in past, uh, he'd made the comment that the owner, all they have to do is fill out an affidavit. That will give JPD responsibility to go in there and do whatever needed. Now, here's the, here's the rub. A lot of times when we have overgrown properties and so forth, and this is just my suggestion, that when we sent out that property letter, that we asked them to fill out and get notarized an affidavit giving JPD permission to come on. Now, that would be a production of the, uh, planning and development code section. But we, a lot of times, the two run hand in hand, unkept property and then violation by squatters. So, if somehow we can put in that, in, in that letter that's going out, an attachment, please complete this affidavit and get it notarized and send this back to us. Then we have legal rights to go in and do what we need to do, but his point remains, if we allow these folks to go on and continuously go on, then we just open up a wide open door for this thing to, to continue to happen. And this is just one little stopgap we, that we can put in the way to help prevent that legally.
Yeah, I, I think that that's a sound suggestion to make that a part of the process. I'm, I'm not saying that anybody's okay with, you know, uh, you know, allowing things to go on, you know? I'm just saying what we're precluded from doing and I, I don't think that that's a problem. In fact, the OVO case, uh, all of those things that are being pursued are being pursued by a coordinated effort between, it started off with not only the police department with, uh, planning and development to see where they were in violation, to go after these problem cases, but also the fire department. Those three, uh, those three departments are working in conjunction with each other to pursue these matters and they will continue. But, but as an added layer, uh, you know, I, I will talk with the planning department about that being a part of the process. I, I guess, I guess the issue has been is that, I guess you don't know that you, you need that until it becomes a problem and the time that that happens.
Explain that, that's the only reason I ask because I, I, you know, I was indignant. What do you mean we can't go up there when folks are squatting and burning down houses? What do you mean we don't have any rights? They're criminals.
Yeah.
Okay? So, the city can take an advanced step and all they have to do is include a letter in there, a form. Hey, this is the affidavit, go get us notarized and send us, send it back to us. Now, we have legal, uh, 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 right to do our job and that is to lessen crime a, at least one, one house at a time.
If that makes it more convenient for the ownership to do it, then, then I think that's something worth pursuing. Either way, it requires action by the ownership.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, thank you. All right, colleagues, listen, we have, um, several things we need to do. One, we have an emergency item. And then I want to reconsider, what item was that? Twenty? Twenty-three or twenty-four? City sourced? I wanna, I wanna reconsider that in executive session so that.
What number?
Twenty-four, is it twenty-four or twenty-three?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So that we could get an update on what, what's really the deal.
What, which one?
Twenty-four, the one that, 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 I think it failed for lack of a second.
Okay, that's twenty-five, right?
Yeah, I, I will, once we get ready to go in, uh. Okay, all right, so yeah, 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 we'll do, but right now, uh, let's, this, ladies and gentlemen, uh, colleagues, this emergency item, um, we took action on it the last council meeting. And from my understanding, the language was not sufficient enough uh, for us to render payment to continue with the program of going green. Uh, in, in, in the reason stating for the, um, for, for us to do this, and so we need to correct it. And so, this would be an order amending, so I need a motion in a second to bring this emergency item, um.
So moved.
Second, all right, it's been moved properly second, uh, that we add to the agenda, order amending the professional service agreement with two degrees Celsius Mississippi to facilitate the going green for a cool, healthy Jackson project. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, all right. Item, item carries, you'd absolutely, we now have it on the agenda. All right, clerk.
Order amending the professional services agreement with two degrees Celsius Mississippi to facilitate the going green for a cool, healthy Jackson project.
So moved.
It's removed properly second on this, now that we have it on the floor, 'cause somebody just explained the right way why we got, why we doing this. I don't, unless I did a good job.
If you did a great job, let's vote.
Oh, we did, okay, they said I did a good, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item carries six with one abstention. All right, now. What, what, what happened?
We approved it last week, it's just an amendment to get them paid.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's all, yeah, all right. Say there. Okay, all right, real quick before we do, uh, item fifty-eight, clerk, if you would read that.
Aye. Monthly report of privileged taxes as required according to section twenty-seven dash seventeen dash five oh one of the Mississippi, Mississippi Code annotated of nineteen seventy-two.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye.
Uh.
All right, the majority has received. All right, so colleagues, we need to go into executive session for two things. One, discussion of litigation, uh, potential litigation, is that correct, Attorney Martin? And then two, item twenty-four, uh, uh, to get that back on the floor so that they can explain to us, uh, what's going on with that, all right? Uh, so at this time, I'll take that motion.
Could we do, uh, that closing?
Yeah, go, go, go ahead, go ahead and do, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead and do your closing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hope we'll close the meeting in honor of Mr. Lash Williams, Johnny Coop, the African man, Mr. Amos Carver Sanders, Mrs. Corey Lee Butler, Mr. Charles Chucky Thomas. And we had a young man, I was a hundred-two years young. Ms. Mangum called me to go to the, uh, nursing facility in Madison named Frank Stokes Senior, said he was my grandfather. Man was a painter up to his nineties, climbing the ladders and everything else. So, we want to wish Mr. Frank Stokes Senior happy belated birthday and wish all the mothers, Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
All right. President?
Yes, 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 sir, Mr. Griselle there, Dr. Omar.
You know, it's, it's graduation season, as an educator, I'm really, um, excited about, uh, you know, one, not only congratulating all of our graduates, but we also have two special graduates in our office. I wanna take this time to publicly congratulate, uh, my deputy clerk, Valerie Brown, and one of our chief deputy clerks, uh, Denise Fortner on completing their certified municipal clerk's program. They will publicly graduate this summer during the NML conference, but I wanted to take this time to go ahead and, and, and congratulate them because it's been about a three-year process and they've worked really hard to earn these credentials. Thank you. All right. Thank you, uh, Dr. Omar.
Okay, uh, I'd like to acknowledge Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Uh, May fifth through May eleventh is recognized as the fifty-fifth annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Municipal Clerks Week, well, I won't, uh, go, well, was initiated in nineteen sixty-nine by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Therefore, as Mayor of the City of Jackson, Mayor Lumumba would like to acknowledge the work of the City of Jackson's municipal clerks, deputy clerks, and our amazing clerks of the council. And thank you all.
Thank you.
I just wanna double down on that recognition. I want y'all to know that we greatly appreciate the work that you accomplish on behalf of this city each and every day. Uh, not only making sure that you maintain the records, uh, you know, leading our municipal elections, uh, taking on the new responsibility which keeps city hall bustling of passports. Uh, we, we're, we're filled to the brim of people trying to get passports each and every, each and every day. And so, uh, we're grateful that this was contemplated in the creation of Municipal Clerks Week, but we're most grateful for our municipal clerks and our council clerks, so thank y'all. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I got it. Let me do the rest of this. Uh, roll-off dumpster day, um, is Saturday, May eleventh, from eight AM to three PM at the Metro Center Mall Dillard's parking lot. Uh, please contact Solid Waste Division, six oh one nine six zero eleven ninety-three for more information. Uh, there is a town hall meeting cancellation. The town hall meeting that was scheduled for May sixteenth has been, uh, canceled due to, uh, just a need to cancel it. It will, uh, be rescheduled and the new date will be announced, uh, soon. And you can call, you can contact constituent service manager Chris Gray for more information on the rescheduling, um, and if there were any inconveniences created by this. But six oh one nine six zero one 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 one. Thank you.
All right, um, yes, sir, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to, uh, give a shout out to my, to my mother, my wife, and my daughter, who are all great mothers.
Well, I'd like to give a shout out to my wife.
Yeah.
My daughter.
Get on it.
My mother-in-law, my mothers, and my grandmother, who are all great mothers, sucks. He'll start us, uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Lee.
I wanna recognize my daughter who received her sacrament of First Holy Communion over the weekend.
All right.
Yes, and I'd like to, uh, say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. But then we're at five.
But then Ward five and all around the city, Happy Mother's Day. I have many mothers, uh, you know, every elderly women in my community, I call them all mother. You know, open the door for them, yes, mother. They're all mothers, and a special Happy Mother's Day to my mother, who will turn ninety-nine years old, uh, in, in a couple of months in July. So Happy Mother's Day, Mom, and to all the mothers out there.
Yeah, uh, of course, I, I join. I join in that recognition, uh, want to take a moment, not only, uh, in recognition of Mother's Day, but in her memory, my mother, uh, who, uh, while I share, my father was my best friend, and I share his ideological positions. Uh, my personality is more like Nubia Lumumba, uh, and so I, I just remember that wonderful lady. And then my amazing wife, who is an outstanding mother, uh, balances so many things, um, and is a, is a brilliant professional all at the same time. Uh, and, and she gives me the leeway to do what I do, 'cause I can't balance everything that she balances, so thank you.
All right, let, let me just say this again, Happy Mother's Day to everybody.
Mr. Banks?
Okay, here we go.
I'm sorry, I can't be quite on this, but, um, thank you all for your wonderful wishes. We all, as hardworking mothers, greatly appreciate it. But I also want to recognize Mr. Stokes in a special way, because I know this is his first year without judge, and I know this is hard, and so we're all thinking about you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman, uh, they had a program last Sunday, and they had some awards issued in her name, and, you know, um, it's hard, it's, it's real hard. I'm better than I was, and the family took a vote. Everybody was in town Saturday for Sunday's program, so the family took a vote. Councilman Banks, and they said I cannot run for mayor. So, that's where my, I hate to say the same thing, so those people been stealing my signs, payback is a bitch.
Uh, Ca- Councilman Stokes, uh, I understand, I, I wanna help you. I'm gonna come, no, I'm gonna come to your, I'm gonna come to your porch. I'm gonna come to your porch and beat you in Domino's after I finish beating the mayor in Domino's. But I'm gonna come to your porch and beat you in Domino's.
We need somebody to call in.
It, yeah, all right, uh, we are now out of executive session, and action was taken. The council did take up item twenty-four, uh, and the reason we went into executive session because of pending litigation, not pending litigation, I'm sorry, potential litigation. Uh, but that item was passed five, five to one. Uh, and also, we received an update, uh, from our legal department. Uh, is there anything else to come, uh, update from our legal department of pending litigation? Is there anything else to come before this body?
No.
All right, beating the jerk. Thank you, Councilwoman Lindsay, Councilman-